Counsel ready, it is six o'clock. And we do have a forum. So we'll call it order, six o'clock. Workshop agenda, this is going to be our first council meeting where we start off with workshop and move into the business meeting afterward. The purpose of moving in, and we're also going to be doing twice a month meetings, starting now, right Craig?
Yes.
Okay, so the purpose of the workshop is to be there where we can ask questions. A little bit more freer environment for speaking and getting the information that we need. Counselors to make a vote. And then when we move to, or when we look at these certain items, some of these items can be moved. If we don't have questions, we can move them to the consent agenda. So when we move to the business side of the meeting, then we may add items to the consent agenda. That's like that process. We won't be doing anything or discussing any public hearing during the workshop. Being a public hearing, you don't want to be discussing those in the works. So at that, I feel. We've got items on minutes. Craig, would you read all of these items in a workshop out?
No, I mean typically just minutes. You can just ask if anybody has any questions on the children. We don't have to actually read what we do in the agenda.
Okay, so that item one on the workshop is item eight on the consent agenda. Do we have any questions regarding the previous minutes?
No.
Item two is another consent agenda item, which is item nine on the business meeting regarding annual rate review mechanism. We have most energy, any questions there? We see those quite often. Alright, so then the one and two, item three is, at the board this 2024 to 2026, providing for the, providing for amendments to the question of it. To reflect appropriation transfers as outlined as a pay. Craig has given us that outline, has given us notes in the margins. Craig, do you have any other comments?
No, I would just comment that the main, main thing that drove this was the BRA going, which when we signed the BRA contract last year. I thought that would be an annual thing, but we were a little behind the curve. By the time we got the acceptance letter and the contract approved and everything, so we were building that work for that. Building October, April, November, but the actual required payment period is September 15th. So we have to make the payment coming year before we move the funds. So that was the primary driver, and then we just had some other accounting things.
And that's one that was up 226.
231.
Two four something.
It was, it was additional 231,000. So it's still in the next year's budget, that'll be a 25 payment.
Okay, are all these arms?
And then there were just a few other items where we've had things come up since the last legitimate adjustment that's going to push us over. We also had economic development incentive on Woodmont, which you, the council approved in '22. We actually made the first payment this year. We did that right around the beginning of the big year and I slipped through and I did that change, but that's just rebating, then back at 50% of the sales tax up to 1,000. There's just a few other minor changes. Air condition, breaking at City Hall.
We have the largest load stream.
Yeah, it was a large, yeah. May was a pretty good spike depending on the maintenance. We thought we'd reduce the INI, which we have, but apparently we reduced 21 inches in one month. Somewhere we had some, it stepped up pretty significantly. The flows were up month to month from last year too, just that we didn't really grow.
Well, we have the budget in that. Increase the month just as precautionary, do you think?
What we do that is, they send us every year kind of based on our prior 12 months flows. Just check it out, typically try to put a little bit of percentage in there. It's this year, I think, I think the 21 inches of rain in May was absolutely similar. So we, I think we greatly reduced the INI, but apparently we still have some issues with that kind of rain, got water flowing somewhere. So I know they're going to be working on this, so we'll test and see if we can see if we're working on it. Have some issues.
This is, maybe this is going off of subject, but with the padlock incident, seems like we've lost a lot of water just to uncontained or unexpected leakage. Do you think it's affected anything down the line?
No, I don't think so.
No?
No.
Okay.
We'll get him something quick.
Ready to roll? Read somewhere yesterday that nationally, that the water loss across the nation is 800 billion gallons in across the nation. Water losses. Craig, what's the generator issue? I thought we had.
So, well, we did, and so what happened was, if you remember after snowbath, the state came out and said we had to be able to operate. So great order to portable generator and switches, put each of the well sites, we could do the generator out. And also because of COVID, part one available. So last fiscal year, he issued the PLS for the generator and all the switches. I think the generator came in, but the switches weren't available until I brought COVID.
And we didn't make the payments for the switches.
Right, and so we had not paid for them, but they hadn't been installed yet. So it just rolled into the issue.
So question about this, so something like this, where we review this agenda, I don't know, public hearing is tied to, so we can't pivot to the consent agenda?
Yeah, this requires, yeah, you can't move it to consent.
Yeah, this would have been one of the ones I would have thought. What would we have a public hearing on?
It's just, the charter requires anytime we've been in the budget. Well, it's okay for stuff like that, where you're doing public hearing for something like budget questions, I think that's fine. The only one is we don't want to do them in the consent, because the nature of making some decisions, these people should hear the public hearing before you have a discussion. Other items that require a public hearing, like the. I think that was the only one I thought I heard, because I anticipated you may have some questions about this specifically. But it's not a case of you can't discuss it, or recount, you just can't move it to consent.
Good, Mr. Hurd?
I'm good.
All along?
Yes.
Alright, any more questions for Mr. O'Malley? Item four is a final plat for the Robinson Industrial Park, makes two, three, two industrial lots, on two separate lots. On 107 acres located on Robinson Industrial Park in Western Charlotte Drive. Mr. Harold, can you answer me?
Yeah, we have a question. Do you have the presentation to make during the meeting? Are these for prospective buyers?
This is the, this is a developer. They bought all that property, he wants to do his first phase.
Okay.
I'm sure he has prospective buyers, that's why he's going to pull the first phase.
Well, I asked him the question. Well, apparently he's going to have a presentation during the business meeting.
Yeah. We could do that now, but it'd probably take a terrific amount of time.
Okay, so. That plays a little confusing as to why we wouldn't just have that on the business meeting.
Just in case there's any questions about it, that anybody wants to ask.
Okay, we're feeling it. Any other questions, Paul and I? This time. I would wait for a presentation, Mr. Harold. Next item is considered possible action, flat vacation for S.E.M., S.E.M., addition lot one, lot one, in order to vacate one existing. Vacate an existing one lot flat in its entirety, approximately addressed in San Antonio Rocket Road. Presentation from that.
Maybe without that presentation, we don't know what that is.
I didn't see your high tone here, personally. I'm with you too. Folks, can you hear us out there? I don't bet you can. I'm sorry, we're trying, and we're going to get some better mics. Okay, L.Fire Protection Services with the Robinson Industrial Park, the provision of fire stations within city blocks.
So that is, the current contract is up into this month, so that's for the next three years. That is, the amount that's listed in the contract is the amount that's budgeted, has already been approved for the coming year.
And we did discuss that item on previous workshops.
Yeah, we discussed that at the budget workshop, so. We discussed the budget items, this is just the contract. And there is, there was a nonappropriation clause added by the attorney that should the council not be able to appropriate full amount, because it does specify a rate for the coming two years, but there is a nonappropriation, and for some reason, based on financial considerations, the city can't come up with that amount of money, because the contract will be, we're not required, we're not obligated to future councils to do that. For some reason, we require that in all contracts.
Flexible?
Yes, that's requiring any, any contract we do has to have a nonappropriation clause. One council can't buy any future.
So this will be one of the, to consent agenda item.
Yeah, if y'all are comfortable with it, you can.
Yeah, I would agree. Craig?
Sure. It doesn't have to be an action item that we have to go on?
I'll have to make it as an action on the consent agenda during the business meeting, but that's going to be. Sixteen. So if you're in the business meeting, when we get to the consent agenda, I'll mention items eight, nine, adding item sixteen, and if we have others. Workshop item seven is proposal from Walker Partners for all engineering activities related to the design construction of the art high school purposes, purchase improvements for the water treatment plant. Also, item eight is with Walker.
Yes.
Okay, and we do have our engineer here tonight, and he will not be present during the meeting, so if we have a question, he'll answer that. Hopefully, we can answer these questions during the workshop and possibly move these items to consent.
I don't have any, well, one question. On the actual business meeting, if there's an item, an item summary, it was five points, but the formatting issue or item number five is, is missing, or if that is the paragraph below, that is actually what we got to have.
Which agenda?
It would be the treatment plant, it's number seventeen. And then the item is somebody.
Thank you.
One, one, seven, four.
The five shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be the number five, there's only four.
Okay. I probably hit enter into the R, create a space, and automatically.
Yes, there were only four points there.
And I think this is one, unless there's some other concerns, that could be moved to consent agenda.
And if you recall, several months ago, we had the presentation from Jim Walker, Joe Jenkins, and Jacob was here, and they kind of gave me an overview of the challenges with the water system. We talked about the reservoir and the system study, and this was, this was, I think we had three or four other engineering proposals on that meeting, so they didn't bring this one forward at that time, because we needed to get the other stuff going. But this does tie in ultimately to the reservoir improvements, plus this makes the improvements to the intake structure on the Robinson River, and we discussed the issues. We talked about in the past, not being able to clear the silt out, pretty honestly, pumping and stuff like that. So that's what this proposal is for. They went over it quite a bit in detail during that presentation, but.
I have a question for Jim. On the add air or high pressure spray system to clear screens and let level silt fill up, can you describe how that works a little bit?
So actually, it's part of the original contract to build the intake structure, it wasn't going to be air, it was going to be basically like a sprinkler system or walk-in water spray system, and that was cut out of the project. So this is just adding it back in there, but it's almost like a bubbler system, where it will agitate that silt that is settled and kind of just get it circulated. So when the pumps turn on, it can actually pull the, pull kind of that silt through the piping and into the reservoirs. But it'll kind of just agitated, so it'll clean the screens, so water can continue to move in and out of the intake structure.
They're in areas of heavy rain events, you're getting a lot of flow in the river, river got a lot of sand in it, it'll silt in our screens, and we got to get something to push that silt back out.
Yeah, what are we doing now?
Get somebody every few years, get out in there, clean it up.
Yeah, I thought that was free, reading that, that would be a nice feature.
Yeah, well, it becomes a problem, because eventually we can't close the gates, and so then more silt comes in and it's just.
Would this reduce the amount of silt that gets collected in the reservoir, or would it be to increase?
I mean, I don't think. That's very my thing, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Have you put that on during his job second?
People down there to clean it?
Come to Robinson and check out. Hopefully, it's pretty clean right now.
Yeah, hopefully.
And so again, counsel, this is just the proposal for Walker Partners, put the engineering together. Now, proposal is four ninety-seven, eight. Probably cost for the project by way of the screen. When do you think that project would go to be?
If I had to put a timeline on it, I would say probably 12 months.
That's just to get it, because of your backlog and getting that.
Yeah, I mean, to design, to design the pumps, and I mean, it talks a little bit about in the proposal, but the existing piping is pretty deep right now, and we're going to be working with the, with having to navigate around the pond rehab project we're doing now, putting in the liner. We may have to do some of this work as part of that, to go ahead and set this up and not affect the liner in the future moving forward. And so kind of just balancing all that, and then getting all the mid documents ready and moving forward.
Counsel, any questions? We're moving that to consent?
Yes.
I don't have a sheet, I mean, what item is that only?
That is number seventeen.
And then next item.
That will stay here.
Yes.
It's you again.
Okay, this is the contract for the SWT, we believe, for Elsworth tank rehab project, Mr. Tank LLC, total cost, thirty-two thousand, two twenty-nine eighteen.
We've used Mr. Tank on two other, two other projects, both have been successful, we've enjoyed working with them, they've been easy to work with, and from our perspective, they've done really, really good work.
The cost, you were happy with the cost?
Yes, sir, I believe we were, our estimate was a little bit higher than what they came in at, so, and the second lowest bidder was pretty close to them, so competitive.
We did have seven bids on this project. Good. It's good. Those two projects in the world, we have to get.
I was really happy with the great, right?
Cost.
By the way, just throw that in.
Hopefully, we'll get the same thing later this month for John Davenport projects too.
Yeah, our estimate was three thirty-five, and Mr. Tank was at two sixty-one, three, so, two sixty-one, two.
Two thirty-five, was it?
We were at three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
We have four bidders there.
Yes, sir. And again, that three thirty-five was based off of the bids that we've received historically for the other four projects that we've done with you guys. So like Craig mentioned, it seems like costs are coming down a little bit, things are more competitive, we have more bids.
And this is, since this is at the plant, this is one of those that Greg would like to get done, probably the water demands down. So between this and the reservoir, hoping to get that project down over this way.
Speaking of Craig, Greg, you all in on this? Are we all in on this?
Yes, I brought it to the table.
This part, and I'm sure you brought the conclusion behind it. This one is set in the winter, but with all the projects we're about to undertake, you know, that's going to create a lot of stress and on your staff and everything, I'm sure you're all ready for that.
They love stress.
Feed on it, right, Greg?
I was just thinking of the timing of, of all these projects and the ones to come.
It's going to be a challenge.
Yeah.
Find a way to make it work.
But having things go down or not being able to operate the way it's supposed to is more stressful than taking it down in a lower consumption time of year to get it fixed or be removing the demanders by far. Much rather take it down, maintain it than have it go down because of lack of maintenance.
For sure.
Then he can maybe sleep a little bit, because he has a long list of things that keeps him up at night.
I could forty or so years, and Greg is going to deal with it. Aren't you about forty?
Almost there.
You're almost forty, since you started here four years, five years, three or more?
Almost forty years you worked with the city.
Forty-five.
Proud of that. Fire owners of Robinson Water. And this is another item, picking your consent?
I can.
Absolute, yeah.
We're adding sixteen, seventeen, eighteen to consent.
A little dizzy about that one. Well, ideally, as we meet more often and we're able to have these workshops, you can speed up the business portion. How I can, in your open, hopefully, how I don't sit through some of these things then. We'll throw on bases. What do you know, top of the tree, that side of it?
Just about.
Baseball and drop them off.
We've got soccer, but I'm coaching, so. Yeah, so that keeps us out of the excuse.
Well, we're good, and I'll be on cruise control, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
Appreciate your work. Okay, counsel, we'll adjourn at six twenty-five, and we adjourn in five minutes, or it is three days, six thirty.
And we will call this meeting to order at six thirty. We have invocation to be provided by Pastor David Tinberg, Boy of Truth. Step on up, and then if we would please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Alright, let's break. Our most gracious assembly, Father, we thank you for all that you're doing here, today, and forevermore. Father, I just, I know you're pointing out your favor and blessing upon the city, that your name will be known for the works that are committed today and for the works committed in the future. Father, the foundation has always been you, and we thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and even the things to come. Father, I pray for the administration, I pray for the city staff, the officers in the room that are on staff, but I pray for the mayor, city manager, all that are involved, Lord, and the oversight, as they are overseers of your city. This is your place, it will always be your place. And Father, your name will be known by what we do with our hands and what we declare with our speech. Father, may our demonstration set forth the future of what you have planned for Robinson and the surrounding community. Father, I pray for the economic wells to just spring up, that prosperity is known because of you. We can follow the plan, but Father, it's your blessing that's upon it, and to hear the things that we are doing here, today, and going forward. Father, I know that you're involved. I hear the work that is to be done. So Father, I pray for your hedge of protection, your guidance, that you lead us in the discernment of what to do and how to do it. Father, again, we thank you for all that you're doing. Father, bless the residents of Robinson and the surrounding community, for your name will be known in us and through us. We love you, we thank you. In Jesus' mighty name we give thanks, amen.
Amen.
Brother Tinberg, thank you very much. I've been here serving the city for almost nineteen years, and there's yet a handful of pastors that will step up and pray for us at each meeting, and you are one of the few, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Present. Alright, item five, a citizen's comments. Do we have anyone here that'd like to speak on any non-agenda items tonight? It's likely we have one. I bet I know who it is. Oh man, give me a lot of ticket. Ms. Lindavon?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come before I speak this evening.
I bring something to you. From the greater greetings of the greater Robinson Chamber of Commerce. I'm okay, I think. I would like to fill you in on our announcements for the upcoming con. First of all, on this Saturday, we will be having a ribbon cutting and brand opening or participating in one for Anytime Fitness. That's by the Gathering Church where Pharmacy Plus used to be. Anyway, that is eleven AM until twelve thirty. I'm not sure that time is correct, but I know that it starts at eleven AM. Would love to have you come and join us for that and welcome them to the community. On September the twenty-fourth, Workforce Solutions is having a hiring fair. So if any of you are looking to hire or if you know someone that's looking for a job, that'd be a great time to participate in that. September the twenty-first, we would like to invite all of you, city council, mayor, city manager, to the first responder appreciation luncheon that we annually have. It will begin at eleven o'clock at our station.
That's the twenty-first, Linda?
Twenty-first, yes.
At what time?
Eleven. We will have barbecue. I know you're surprised about that, but we will have barbecue. On September the twenty-eighth, the Bill Morgan 5K run, they're going to try to make that an annual event. I believe they did it last year and they're going to do it this year. On September the twenty-eighth, you all probably know this, National Night Out, and a lot of you will be participating in that. The chamber will be participating as well. And then on October twenty-sixth, we don't necessarily have this on our calendar yet because it's in the works, but there's going to be a Halloween in the park. And so we'd love for all of you that would like to, to participate in that, they're going to be putting together some fun things at the park and invite any other businesses that want to participate to be a part of that. Personally and as a member of the chamber, I would like to hear more about the restructuring of the park, Peplo Park, what's going on there. And I would like to regenerate the discussion down this flashpad. So those are things on my mind. December fifth, we will be having our Christmas parade thing to be determined. And that will probably be determined at our next board meeting, which is on September the eleventh at noon here in the city council room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. All right, next we have a pretty special presentation. If the chief would please step up, we have a life-saving award presentation. Council, once we get this presentation, the picture will be behind us. We'll split the chairs here and give them some room for. Okay.
Mayor, city council, just move in. My purpose began not to present a life-saving award, Saint Mike Noel. Mike is one of the officers in our department who has been not seen in a job every day. And this is actually the day that's totally outstanding and others. On July twenty-ninth, at about ten twenty-eight AM, Robinson Police Department received a nine-one-one call. There was a, an emergency that reported that infant had become choked on a pacifier. The caller stated the infant was struggling to breathe and had begun to turn blue. Robinson Police Department communication promptly notified Officer No- Sergeant Noel and the Robinson Voltaire Fire Department. They all responded. Sergeant Noel was the first to respond to the scene and without any hesitation entered the residence and immediately assessed the situation. It was clear that the infant's condition was critical. Baby was turning blue. Without the swift life-saving intervention, child at risk of asphyxiation and potential long-term injuries due to lack of oxygen. Demonstrating exceptional composure and quick thinking, Sergeant Noel performed two sets of back thrusts successfully dislodging the pacifier, enabling the infant to breathe. In the form of arrival of medical personnel, Sergeant Noel transferred the child to their care for evaluation and treatment. It's worth noting that Sergeant Noel's recent CPR training he had received from the Voltaire Fire Department came back. If the training comes back into your mind right away, and he knew what to do because of outstanding training he'd gotten from the fire department. Played a crucial role in his ability to respond effectively and without any hesitation. This incident underscored the importance of continuous training and significant impact it can have in life-threatening situations. In recognition of his life-saving award, Sergeant Noel is being honored with a life-saving award today. This is, by the way, his third life-saving award with Robinson Police Department. On this Tuesday, Thursday, September twenty-fourth. And we have Adrian, little baby, that we, the person that got the attention.
With a mask on.
Adrian brought his parents from summer and Isaac to the team. In addition, this award, Sergeant Noel has also been nominated Officer of the Quarter with the Central Texas Area Police Chiefs Insurance Association. And it's an honor to, let me present this award to him.
Absolutely.
Maybe Isaiah won't come photo bomb?
Yeah, get the baby in.
Yes.
We're facing forward. That's where the last one. Oh no, here comes the baby.
I heard more than one.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, well, now.
Right.
Nice to meet you. Sorry for hitting you, buddy.
No, thanks.
So many things to do.
Everybody should be right.
Yeah, you're last.
Okay, we're good.
This is the next, next generation of Mike Noel. Thanks again.
People making noise.
Stop.
All these people making noise.
I know.
All these people looking at me.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, he's home. There we go. That was Jeremy's time.
Yell that one a little bit. No, here we go.
Just a little personal note about Sergeant Noel. We had met many years ago and we had met many years ago. Good circumstances. Good circumstances, not much. No, I wasn't much older than your son. I wasn't much older than your son. Well, I had, had out of known that we had a true hero among us, but you were great then. You treated me with great respect even then as a punk kid, so appreciate you. I'm glad you're here with Robinson and three awards for life-saving. It's an honor to have you in our PD.
Got better with age.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good luck with that teenager.
How is all of you doing, stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That was nice. And we have another one. Well, it's not a life-saving award, but item seven is a proclamation for Constitution Week that we get the glorious, delirious Master George to come up and speak a little bit. Do you want me to say the proclamation first or do you want to speak first?
I didn't speak last time.
Whatever makes you most uncomfortable would be better for me.
Hi, I'm the Lord's Master George Mosadegh Meli from the City of Robinson, a past region of the Uspid Ford Bradley Chapter of the Dollars of the American Revolution, otherwise known as the DAR. Our chapter thanks to City of Robinson for its declaration, honor, celebration of Constitution Week. Constitution Week was officially enacted by President White Eisenhower on August second, nineteen fifty-six. President George W. Bush officially declared inception of Constitution Week in September of two thousand and two. The purpose of the exhibit week is to promote study and provide education about the United States Constitution, which was originally adopted by American founders, abolition and liberation, September seventeenth, seventeen.
Get a.
Very good.
Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred thirty-seventh anniversary of the adoption of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the dollars of the American Revolution are descendants of these great patriots. And whereas public law number nineteen fifteen adopted August second, nineteen fifty-six guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third of Constitution Week. And whereas it is fitting proper to accord official recognition to this memorial and memorable anniversary and to the patriotic exercise that will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I, for example, Mayor of the City of Robinson, Texas, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to participate in observance of this support of the patriotic event by reaffirming the ideals of Frank Roosevelt Constitution. Thank you, Mayor.
I have to say. Give me a pen, I'm sorry.
Pen.
She wants that ink.
Oh, it looks good.
Want to get chum.
I'll have to crop it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, council, we are now moving to the consent agenda portion of the work or the business meeting. We had consent agendas eight and not, items eight and nine originally, and during the workshop we added sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Is there any further discussion or pull out on those?
No, but I would make a, a motion to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, plus the addition of the regular agenda items, number sixteen, seventeen and eighteen as discussed.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion is to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten gets us to the public hearing portion. We're going to have four. First up is item ten, conduct a public hearing, consider possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three and ordinance of the City of Robinson, Texas, amending appendix A zoning, Article Six zoning districts and Article eleven supplemental district regulations, and providing a savings clause and finding and determining at the meeting at which this audit is passed is open to the public laws. Open to the public as required by law. Public hearing opens at six forty-nine with presentation with Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I have for you tonight is several code changes. The power to touch upon those. What these code changes covers, accessory, the accessory dwelling unit section of the city zoning code. These changes are just, all those are, the changes are within your packets. There is the actual ordinance that shows all the changes in detail and also a summary sheet with the report that goes into detail of the changes in line of being done. Basically what this does is currently the accessory dwelling unit standard could use the principal dwelling unit standards for accessory dwelling units. And it leads to a bunch of variances. So what this does, it breaks out what we call the main dwelling unit into its own separate category and the accessory dwelling unit into its own separate category. So we have maximum size requirements, which are, as stated in the ordinance, one half of the floor area of the principal maximum size or a thousand square feet, whichever occurs first. It's also modifies who lives within an accessory dwelling unit. Right now, only family members can. That removes the standards. That way it becomes more market rate. Modifieds utility standards. Right now, they have to tie the accessory dwelling unit into the principal dwelling unit's utilities. That removes these requirements for city-related utilities and departs back to utility policy, utility department. Also removes the allowance for HUD manufactured mobile home as allowable ECU in the IZO category. Right now, there are only allows of use by right in the mobile home category for a main dwelling unit. So this would remove what I feel would be something that may not be so desirable to have in the IZO category. August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the commission recommended approval five zero with the condition a thousand square foot max be removed from the code changes. What they wanted to see was no maximum standard, it just stays one half of the floor area maximum. So what would happen is right now where the code is written, let's say you have a three thousand square foot house, that half of that maximum would be fifty five hundred. But it would default to a thousand because it would be less than that. They wanted that provision removed. So that way there would be none of thousand square foot cap on the larger main dwelling units being able to allow larger accessory dwellings. With that said, that concludes my report. I'm here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Do we have anyone in this public like to speak on this item this time? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at six fifty-two. Open for council discussion.
David, who could live in one of these if it's not just family now? How do we expand it and who can live in one?
Sorry?
I'm sorry, so who can live in one? You said that it, here to Ford has been only family.
Right now, our code says family members.
Correct. And so the new code would be who? Who all, it could be anybody.
Which probably was occurring right now in our jurisdiction.
So it's just. Go ahead, Gerald. Taking a situation and broadening so that people aren't limited as to who could actually live there. That's good.
Hey, David. Are these are open-ended time limits on these? Are these considered additional permanent residents?
These would be additional dwelling, the, the area where they're allowed now is not changing. They're allowed by right in most residential categories. So it would be something that, that would not be changing. It's just changing some other standards around.
Okay.
Question.
The only thing it would change is if you were. The only thing it would change is if you were to do a variance, say, or to go under the maximum dwelling size or minimum dwelling size.
Just thinking of a specific instance that I'm aware of. So this only affects the dwelling size. So if someone were to do a large barn and then put an apartment inside that, the square footage would just be of the livable square footage being half or 50% of the main dwelling. So they can still have a larger barn in that respect, but they're dwelling inside that.
Their living space would be limited to that size.
Understood.
Well, one thing to keep in mind, though, on the residential properties where these would go, there is a maximum block coverage provision. You can't do more than 50%. That's all zoning district, so.
And that varies depending on the actual SF1 and.
Yeah, it just depends on whatever the really depends what size the lot is. They can't cover more than 50% of the lot with buildings, so.
Like those standards aren't changing. They stay as is. Those standards are changing as.
Setbacks and all those things still apply regardless.
The current size, David, being a thousand?
No, well, I'm sorry, the proposal.
Proposed, but what's the current maximum size?
There is no maximum size. It's a minimum size that we use for dwelling area. That's regarded as well. And we have to apply that to the accessory dwelling unit. So it's resulting in a lot of variance. People want to build a smaller accessory dwelling than say, you know, 1,800 or 1,500 square foot. So this would basically set no minimum outside of building, who already requires. It would set a maximum one half the floor area or 1,000 square feet if you were approved at that.
What's the reason for limiting it to 1,000?
The staff believed we didn't want to, the staff at the time, well, myself, we didn't want to create a situation where we created too big of an accessory dwelling. 1,000 would be a nominal cap to that. That would give them two sized bedrooms. Now, the planning and zoning costs are a couple different regards to that. That's why they wanted to eliminate 1,000 foot cap on it.
What did the planning and zoning recommend?
They recommended approval with the removal of, right now, the code says maximum one half of the floor area of 1,000 square feet, whichever is less, they take out 1,000 square feet. So in other words, there would be no, there would be no cap on if it went over 1,000 square feet today. Under this proposal, when over 1,000, it would default back to 1,000 square feet. If you remove the cap, then it can't be larger than the floor area of the main dwelling, which could be maximum one half of dwelling area. So today, where the voters are getting a 4,000 square foot home, the max is 2,000 or 1,000, whichever is less. So it defaults to 1,000. By removing that, it just goes to the 2,000 square foot.
So you're going to allow then, you're saying.
Sorry?
You're allowing to.
That's what the zoning wants.
Zoning wants to do that. Got it. You're saying you want to limit it to 1,000.
Correct.
Well, but the only thing is if there's a house, though, that somebody has, let's say your mother-in-law, anybody, and you have a 5,000 square foot house, well, 1,000 seems almost insignificant compared to that. So I mean, why, I don't, I'm not sure I agree. I think I agree with the zoning board personally that we should leave it at 50%.
I do too. Um, I think that, I believe that the max coverage of the, the open area takes care of too big of a secondary.
Exactly.
You know, space and also the half, the half the livable area of a house. So if you've got a 4,000, 5,000 square foot house, you can do a 2 or 2,500 square foot accessory. But you still need a big lot to absorb that.
Exactly. I do have one more question, David. So you, is it proposing on, if you could go back to your list of things that changed, we're going to, what, what did it have to do with mobile homes?
Mobile homes are a, are a use by permission in the AG zoning category. This will eliminate that, so they would not be allowed.
So if you have a mobile home there now, couldn't put an accessory mobile home for someone else to buy?
Well, if you had a accessory mobile home there now, it.
No, if you have a mobile home there, let's say that the house, the primary house is a mobile home.
That this, okay.
Could you put an accessory mobile home next to that home, a mobile structure, not say mobile home, but you know, a, a built off site? What I understand this to do is to limit homes being brought in that are built off-site. You want something built onsite.
Yeah, the, the way the current code is written makes it a specific use from recommendation from commission and US council for consideration of that. So it's your decision from a specific use standpoint whether to allow that or not. The reason for that elimination is right now for main dwelling units, it's limited only to the mobile home zoning, which doesn't exist on the map yet. So the idea I had behind that is if we look heavily limited as a main dwelling area on mobile homes to a specific zoning category, why would you want to allow that in an ag zoning category, which could affect aesthetics and could affect the development of the city? That was my staff standpoint from excluding that portion of it.
But to answer my question, if you have a primary residence being a mobile home, can you have a mobile home accessory building? Under this, you couldn't.
You can now if you ran a specific use allowing.
After this change, could you?
No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's, personally, I don't think that's fair. I think if a person has, which I don't live in, but I'm just saying if a person has one, why should they not be able to, to bring a building off-site and put it next to a building that was also built off-site? It's the same structure. It's not like you're changing the dynamics of the neighborhood.
I think the broad definition of a HUD manufactured home needs to be clear here because it's not just a nice double wide that you see over. It can be a lot of different types of, of structures that qualify for that, and I don't think you want every one of those. There, there are some that you absolutely would be horrible if it moved in next door.
Yeah, a HUD code manufactured home is kind of your single wide, it's both HUD code standards. This does a couple of, we call it a modular type home that's built under state I R C. So like you see later, the double wide, you see people working on those. They're kind of working, being split with the, those are different HUD manufacturer.
Personally, I'd like to think about this with y'all some. That's my thoughts on it. I think we need to review this and think about it as a council before we make a decision on it. That's my, that's what I want to do. I mean, I don't think I would vote.
I don't disagree with that. I would, I would though say that previous conversations regarding HUD manufactured homes in front of council have almost always been denied. Um, and in fact, if we've made some changes to make that more difficult to bring those into the city because previous councils did not want those in the city. I think, you gotta, you gotta really understand what a HUD is, that manufactured home is.
And that's what I'm trying to do now, Jimmy. I just want to understand what we're eliminating and why does it make sense?
Your wife would beat you with a stick if you brought one home.
Why can't we decide that then on a, on an individual basis rather than just excluding that category?
Right, individual basis. Like people would have to get a special use permit to, so they have to.
You could do it, but you gotta come before council. This does eliminate it as a, now you can still bring one into the city under special use permit if it is the only dwelling.
You can bring a mobile home as a main dwelling in the city.
Correct.
Mobile home zoning category, which right now, if there's no mobile home zoning category on the map, it's, it's what we call a floating zone. It exists in our book, but it's not on our map and area is zoned yet for it.
Yeah, and, and this just prevents it from being brought into a property that already has a main house that already is zoned and someone's living there. It just prevents that type of home from being brought in. Doesn't prohibit it completely from the city, just from this type of, of use. Which I, I mean, I, I agree. I, I, I think that, uh, a lot of places are, are going in this direction with, with the HUD manufactured homes and, and removing those from allowed uses. Um, I agree with you. I think that we need to remove the 1,000 square foot mark. But I would, I would like to keep the, the, uh, the removal of the allowance of the HUD manufactured homes as it was written. So I, I, I'd like to see that stay, I guess, stay into the, the proposed ordinance.
With, with the fact that they could always come in and ask for a variance.
It, it wouldn't in that circumstance, just so we're clear. You, you could come and get a variance in a situation as a, as a accessory dwelling.
Right, use warrants are prohibited by city code already. So right now, it's a specific use for an accessory dwelling unit in the ag zone. The, the code change, but I would recommend that they couldn't ask for that specific use anymore.
Okay, just want to be clear.
My overall concern, and I'm, I know I'm taking up a lot of time.
No, we're fine. This is what we're for.
My overall concern is that we be fair to all citizens because if we have an area that allows these, then that's what's in that area. I don't happen to live in one of those. I know you don't, but I'm for people being able to do what they need to do with their property for the most part. And I'm going to always default on helping the citizens to be able to do what they need to do for their families, et cetera. And it worries me, you're concerned to me that we change something to prohibit that possibly from happening unnecessarily. I'm not sure that we're gaining anything as a city by eliminating this particular thing personally. I'm not convinced of that. And maybe I could be if I understood it more. And David, I'm not just disagreeing with you, sir. I appreciate your, your concern and your care for taking care of our, our city and making sure that we are upgrading and, you know, we want things to look nice and, and so on. But at the same time, we have to consider our citizens that live here. And if they live in an area that has that, we need to, I think, accommodate them as much as possible.
I think a lot of that is the fact that we've been trying to get away from, what we call a spot zoning that we've had issues with along 77. We try to maintain the continuity of the city citywide rather than separate local entities. And by restricting certain types of dwellings, we continue to do that. And to overextend those boundaries is really not good.
David, the tiny homes at like Farm and Yard, are those considered HUD manufactured?
It depends on how they were manufactured.
Okay.
The zoning standard for it. Usually tiny homes are not, but they won't meet the, the, because a lot of tiny homes must be principal dwellings. They never meet the size, the, the minimum size standards. That's what is prohibited towards though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are very, very, very few places you can put one of those out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the issue, two issues that I see is, one is we don't have an area allowing, so the ones that are now are in non-conforming use.
That is correct. If they're main dwelling units, yes.
Yeah, so we have, so we are allowing them to occur currently, but we also don't have areas for them to come with new ones, right? One concern is, is what if you do have one and then you allow, and then now you have many parks popping up? You know, to where now you could have, I don't know, I don't know where the area is. I don't even know of examples, but.
Can't we make that a per case? Situation?
It is currently.
Yeah. Currently, let's make that decision as we go necessarily. We don't have to necessarily totally exclude things.
I, I think that we probably need to relook at the zoning map and see if it's something that we want to include period in the city. And if so, where are the best fits for this?
Yes.
And it may not be where any of them currently are, and those still, then you still, I would feel at that point, well, we still would not want them to have, you wouldn't want those properties to grow if the intent is to allocate zoning for that type of dwelling in another area. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I have a question as well.
I think it'd be important, Bert, excuse me, Jim.
That's okay, Trump. Um, David, let's say there's a family that's got a manufactured home as their primary dwelling. Now, if they are under the condition where they have to replace that dwelling as for some reason, whether the thing is damaged or outdated or just whatever old, are they required to build a normal site, home on that site, or get them replaced as what they've had there now?
Say, if tornado comes through any rates.
There's a provision in our code that talks about if it's destroyed by an act of God, a natural event, then they hold permit for the set amount of time, they can put a mobile home back on the site even though the use is not allowed. But in most circumstances, the use is not allowed.
So they would actually be restricted from replacing that unit with another unit of the same like design?
Provided it's outside of the timeframe.
No, there, there's a.
It's outside of the time.
Yeah, there, there's a provision, there's a provision in the law beyond the city code a non-conforming mobile home can be replaced if it's damaged, or they can just replace it because they want to, but it has to be a newer model. They can't replace it. There's like, I forget what the provision in the law, but it has to be newer than a certain number of years old. Yeah, and so you have to allow them to replace it. It's just you can do it with a newer one. But I think one of the concerns here is we have a mobile home park zoning designation that has parameters of what can be. And if someone was to come in and had a large piece of land and wanted to do a mobile home park, they could come in and apply for the rezoning and you all could decide if that's there. I think what you want to be careful of is you don't want pop-up where somebody comes in and they, they've got a mobile home and they put another one and then they partition off another piece of property and somebody wants to stick. And suddenly you have pop-up mobile home parks that fall under a different zoning district that's not designed to deal with mobile homes. And then we get into the issue about water meters and water access and utilities. And there's just a lot of things that come into play. So that's why most cities don't allow, keep mobile homes pretty regulated. You know, there could be a place where they're appropriate, but that's why you have the mobile home park zoning category. And if someone could come in and present their case, why they believe it should be at a location, you have that option. But if you just start letting them come in as accessory dwellings to existing and stuff, suddenly you may end up having mobile home parks where you don't want mobile home parks.
True, and I, that's why I agree with Bert's idea. Let's talk about zoning in certain areas we would or would not want to have. And I'm.
So, and you have to have somebody who wants to zone it, though. I mean, you would, you need, you know, you're not going to create a zoning category, or you're not going to rezone someone's property if that person doesn't want to put a mobile home park on it. But if they want to have a mobile home park, they have that right to come in and apply for this.
That'd be a future lead use map.
I'm just saying we're big. Well, it falls under residential, under the.
It falls under residential, it's still, it'd be a zone change from whatever the rest zone is to the MH zone.
Yes, but we, we have that, we actually have that zoning category exists today in the zoning ordinance. And it sets the parameters of the density and all that other stuff. So the opportunity is there to have mobile home parks if someone owns a piece of land and wants to develop one. But what you want to be careful of is you don't want to create where suddenly you have individuals clustering together and then over time you end up with a mobile home park. You can't, you can't regulate because it just kind of popped up in that location. It doesn't meet, it doesn't fall in that zoning. You got a large non-conforming area of mobile homes. So that's, that's typically why cities want to be careful how they regulate mobile homes. And, and that's why that's there is because people will find, people are always coming to try to find ways to work around things. And we, where we can, we try to, but what you don't want is those unattended consequences of suddenly there's an issue and we can't deal with it because.
But what are set in place right now to prevent that, correct? They have to come to us for permits and they have to go through planning and zoning. I'm pointing, I'm pointing at my neighbor here that's.
I mean, at the, at the very least, if you want to do it, I would keep the SUP provision, but.
Say it again.
Is there any harm in that? Keeping the SUP provision?
There's no harm in it. I mean, there's no harm keeping that provision at all. It's just, it's just an aesthetic thing.
Yeah, this, what we're talking about today is putting one in your backyard.
Right.
Yeah, this is, this is what this ordinance is, putting it in the backyard.
Right.
To me, all these other discussions that we're having, to me, it's.
Primary residence.
Yeah, that's more primary residence or zoning change. This is strictly an accessory dwelling unit in ag, eliminating HUD, HUD manufactured homes, not the others, and I'm good with that.
Very, the RE zone, the SAP zones, all those residential zoning categories do not allow it anyways. So this would be a new something coming in as an accessory dwelling unit.
I think this is going to be the same type of discussion and we'll get the same type of feedback from the community we get for the storage units that are being dropped off. The people are upset that their neighbor put one of those in the backyard. Now, we have a mobile home sitting next to it. This is going to be one of those contentious items that, um, as long as I've been here, mobile homes are, are not a popular item and highly contested. And it's been in the opinion of council before us and, and this current council that we did not want those in these residential areas. That's just kind of the.
In any residential area?
Well, it's been allowed as a SUP, as you said, but, and an ag, but now we're, we're removing that.
I know I'm pushing the mobile homes.
Well, removing, removing it as an accessory dwelling.
That's an ECU.
ECU, yeah. ADU, yes.
We're, I'm good with the, as proposed.
We're a large city geographically, so I mean, we're talking areas that could accommodate that for certain people, and I'm not against that personally. And not, not against mobile home areas that are, that are in an inappropriate area that aren't taken away from certain neighborhoods or people that feel like they're being encroached on or what have you. I'm not against that personally, just so you know. I'm not for being inappropriate, and I'm not for people, but I think we have, have a, you know, you have to apply, you have ordinances, but we have, you have to already apply for a special permit to do that anyways. I'm not sure we're gaining anything changing that, but. It's my thoughts.
Okay. Any other consideration or action? Anybody wants to make action?
I'll make a motion. I'll only get myself on the right page. A motion with conditions. Motion to approve ordinance 2024-23, 023, the City of Robinson amending Appendix A zoning, Article 6 zoning districts and Article 11 supplemental district regulations, and providing a savings clause in finding the, in determining that, that the meeting in which this ordinance is passed is open to the public and parable law with the condition to remove the 1,000 square foot, got to scroll down. Sorry, I'm trying to find the, yeah, the, the thousand square foot maximum to be removed from code changes.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-023 with the condition of removing the thousand-foot maximum from the code change. Any further discussion?
That means we're not addressing this.
Any other, well, so we have a motion on the, on the table. We'll vote. And if it passes, then we pretty much, council spoken as to what they want to do. If it fails, then another motion could come up with a different change or a different variance.
Yeah, I understand that. Your, your motion to me does not include.
I did not address that. I, I would like it included with the motion.
I understand.
And, and no hard feelings on that.
No.
Just my personal take on it.
Nobody's always right about anything.
Okay, so we will vote on this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is conduct a public hearing, consider possible action on ordinance 2024-24, an ordinance of the City of Robinson, Texas approving a zoning change from retail office district RO to light commercial district C1 on approximately 7.038 acres of land on the Pliny County appraisal district property IDs 379431 and 379432, Doy Baker 2 block, block 1, lot A and lot 2.
You were doing so well.
I was doing good. I thought I had.
718 is when we open the public hearing with presentation from Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I have 49 as a rezoning. Areas within the white is the area of the rezoning. C1 exists into the northern west 77. It's that area that's in pink right there. C2 is in purple, exists across from the site. This area is a commercial area. Excuse me. You can also see there are residences that border this over here as well. I'll touch upon that later in the presentation. The RE district basically as it stands now is just a neighborhood district that has neighborhood uses within it. Certain office uses, certain smaller retail related uses. It's the transition to certain residences. C1 district has a higher commercial intensity threshold, allows general retail trade businesses, has journey along major thoroughfares and are at the intersection of major thoroughfares, and it's convenient to residents in that area. So we have a higher commercial threshold. This allows the RE to. Within your packet, there's a deep, within one of the attaches to the package, a detailed sheet that shows the uses that would be added in green for C1, uses that would be subtracted in red and yellow, uses that would be by specific use, which is used by permission. When you look at these items, you have to consider the uses that could go at that location, are they compatible with the area around it? You can see car wash, dry cleaning, that sort of thing would be allowed, laundromat, pet shops. So analysis of the uses, we feel from the staff there, but it's not detrimental to that surrounding area. And the parcel borders, the major roadway, and also any uses that would occur, we have to do certain buffer in the standards, which will not change based on the zoning, but will be based on what our code states today. As you can see, restaurants will be allowed as well. We feel without the detrimental area, you can see one use, assisted living facility would go away. We're taking a look at this as well. Different items changed in all the standards. The areas in yellow indicate the use changes. As you can see, there's an actual increase from five feet to 15 feet for any residential uses. That was the area in blue that I showed on the screen earlier, so there's a greater setback for the buildings. Now, based on analysis, looking at these, there is, these changes are minor in nature. There's no detriment to the area, especially with the increasing distance between residential uses under the C1 category. With that said, the information within your package, staff has no issues or concerns regarding this request. This item was also heard at the August 15th PCC meeting as well, and they recommended approval of this item 5.0. I'm here for any questions. The applicant is here as well. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. The applicant have anything else to add at this time?
Not really.
Is there any one in the public that'd like to speak on this item? For, against, questions, comments? Step on up, name and address, please, ma'am. How else we gonna see some auto insurance?
Terry Hope Camp, 237 Hope Camp, Robinson, Texas. I'm, I'm wondering about the one that was in red that was to do away with a assisted living center. It's really hard to really look in and you're just sitting out here with me where exactly that's located on 77 or something. So I think it's some verification. Right across from Burt's, is that what that is?
Uh, that's.
Next to Max Camp and the old Sonic.
That's the property that joins Max from the north. That's right across the street from, I think it's a Mexican restaurant right over there, across the street.
Machine shop or something that's abandoned? No, no, he's just showing a, he is just showing a possible use within a zone that is not allowable in the C1 zoning. Yeah. Anyone else to speak on this item? Yeah, that's, that's some action. 721 will close the public hearing.
So to answer Terry, hi Terry. To answer your question on that, that's about 400, 300, 400 feet off of 77, that little, the neck that goes down to the larger part of the property. It's 200, 300 feet, 300 or more feet next to that machine shop.
There's roughly two acres, acre and a half in this area here.
Ooh, yeah, we're texting. We're very fancy.
Tell, tell her what's, what that's next to. There's a little machine shop that's there that Leah Alz is not far away.
And then it goes back into this roughly five and a half acres back here.
What do you plan to do with it?
Well, that's.
I'm actually, we put in an HTO store in Hewitt, and we're looking at this as a possible second location.
What is that, HTO?
HTO, the world's favorite tea.
Okay.
It's a beautiful building, by the way.
Yeah, it is beautiful.
My son said it was opening day and was mad that I drove by it.
Yeah, we actually opened on Thursday, a soft opening, and then grand opening started Friday.
He got me today that I drove past it.
Didn't we approve that? A permit, that was supposed to be a bakery of some sort.
That would be the building next to it.
No, that's a different building.
Different building, differently.
That's the old Sonic location.
Old Sonic building.
Yeah, it sits 200, 300 feet off the.
Back three hundred baker development years ago. It used to flood quite a bit, but I think it all changed up now. I don't think you have a.
We're still working on the flood plain issue. There's still quite a bit of flood plain back on that right corner back in there.
Yeah.
I have a lady that wants me to get with them, get an actual map of the latest map. I think Walker did the latest map of that flood plain for the City of Robinson. So we're trying to figure out how much land is actually usable.
You'd be required to get a flood study to do that anyway. I know that for a fact because I developed that property on 77 between Tagen and Quitleeu. But I know Doy developed that, and he, he added a tremendous amount of fill to build it up out of the flood plain. So most of it probably should be out.
There's only about three acres in that back section. There's only about three, three and a half acres. You can actually see the line right along here. And this is all still down at creek level. Everything that's outside of that greener looking area. So over here, all the way along the back, and then down this side here is all back down at creek level. And then this area here has been raised about four or five feet.
Well, it's, it's pertaining to zoning. Mr. Harold, the pink or purple is C2, you're saying?
The, yeah, the pink that's right here is C1 zone.
That's not showing up on the screen when you hit it.
C2 is all this right here. It's Shires, went all the way down.
Okay, but the brown is the C1?
The brown is RO, retail office.
Where's the C1 now?
C1 is right.
It's not showing on the screen when you point.
Yeah, when you point, it's not showing.
You can't see it.
It, it's to the north of that, yeah.
Okay.
That's where the car wash, the new car wash is going in, all that.
I mean, in our future land use map, don't we have C1 pretty much going down all 77?
Commercial land use going down all 77. So it is what further drills down the button uses and commercial intensities you follow the road.
David, how far away from that property is the residential area?
How far away from what?
Just to the north.
The property we're in question, how, how, how far away is the residential?
Some of those backyards back up to it. It, yeah, they share a back, backyard.
Do we have any letters of opposition?
If there were any, we'd have them in front of you right now.
Okay, none.
For or against, it wouldn't matter.
Quite honestly, I thought it already was C1. But that's probably what maybe delayed it. Of course, there's other factors, but I mean, I don't see any problem with that being C1. We certainly want to be moving product, properties from residential.
And there would be, Bert, there would be ordinances to protect those houses for a distance from.
Still going to be buffer issues and things like that, yes.
Yeah. El Paso goes a whole bit behind me.
I'm ready for a motion. Preach. Motion to enact ordinance for project 24-000417, approving the change from retail office district RO to light commercial district C1 on approximately 7.038 acres of land on Pliny County appraisal district property ID 379431 and 379432, Doy Baker 2, block 1, lot A and lot 2.
Second it.
All right, motion is to approve ordinance 2024-024, stating, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When you start building.
Greatest tease, right?
I gotta figure out flood area first. That's my first thing.
Build, build, build. Let's go, help us out.
Thank y'all very much.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for investing in our community.
Absolutely.
Do you live in our community?
No, I actually live over at Lorena.
Oh, well, you can come on over to this side if you want.
Down out in the stick. Oh, my wife wouldn't move anywhere. We have a beautiful home out in the range of grass, but she.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you've got some space.
Ah, we won't hold it against you. All right, item 12, conduct a public hearing, consider possible action on ordinance 2024-025, an ordinance of the City of Robinson, Texas for a specific use in order to allow for a short-term rental as a use in the duplex two-family, two F residential district on .31 acres approximately, addressed at 3041 Buckskin Lane. Public hearing opens at 7:28 with, again, Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a specific use permit for a short-term rental. Site, the actual site is right here. Site has two epizoning, there's two epizoning, there's duplex zoning in the area. Uses are all residential of similar nature. This short-term rental will occupy one portion of the building. Highlighted right there in red. There's enough driveway there now, our two cars. Our code says you have to have the minimum of two parking spaces for the number of bedrooms covered greater. This home has three bedrooms and also has space to park two more cars in the garage, so it meets the standard, it has about four parking spaces. Under city code, you have eight findings of facts that you have to consider when renting a specific use. Those are within your packet. With staff interpretations of those within your packet as well, which I'll just touch upon here. We believe the request is not detrimental to the area due to larger sized lots, large driveway with two-car garage, and surrounding areas are duplex in nature. Under city code, you may impose reasonable conditions necessary to protect interest and welfare, including a time period. And also you can do conditions that stated up here in this paragraph as well, which means excessive noise, offensive use, that sort of thing as well. Based on the information within your packet, staff has no issues or concerns regarding the request, provided the following conditions are approved. These are in your code. We automatically bring those forward as part of the ordinance. We would like you to do that as well. Basically, this just limits the state. This right here just says, you know, it's permanently occupied. For our code requirements, this states that it has to be a minimum of two spaces. Of course, the code goes greater than that, there are three bedrooms, it has to be three spaces. Food services can be provided. The architecture of the structure cannot change. And also they have to do a permanent smoke warm with us to meet city's codes and building fire codes. And also as a short-term lease, they're required to pay hotel motel tax. These are four conditions that are within your code, but we ask that you bring them forward in the ordinance. This is what we ask for all specific uses that are rented, no matter what it is. The planning and zoning commission heard this item at their August 15th meeting. They recommended the approval with the following conditions, adopting all the staff conditions that I went through, and also limiting to a 12-month approval with limitations based on violations. So that would be sort of, there was any noise complaints or anything along those lines. Some limitations associated with that. And with that said, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
If anyone in the public would like to speak on this item tonight? We'll close the public hearing at 7:32. We have two letters of opposition.
Three.
Three letters of.
Really, no.
Three signed documents.
One for the same guy.
Okay.
There's two of them, and they are talked about. They're representing someone else.
Yeah.
That raises a concern to me that that may not reflect somebody's opinion. It could be regarded as hearsay, so just.
Right, yeah, so I think it's just really two, right? Because Paul wrote in one, and then his, then there's a typed up letter that says he's speaking on behalf of Paul. So two, but Paul did do a good quote for Star Trek.
I appreciate it.
Amazing.
Right, yeah.
That was good.
I can't believe there wasn't more letters written back, considering it's such a.
Well, most of these are tenants.
Yeah, those are rentals.
These are not going to be owners.
Yeah, so then I also don't understand why we're planning zonings at a 12-month minimum. I mean, what are they wanting out of the short term? Aren't those?
No, that's the long, that's the length of the SUP. That's the length of the permit.
I was like, what's the point?
You have to come back every year for review, basically.
I understand.
I had some questions regarding the length. So was the, the applicant present at part? I had some questions regarding the length. So was the, the applicant present at Park, uh, not Parks, uh, P and Z?
Yes.
So when they talked about, uh, limiting, um, the length of stay, let me pull that back up, had it in front of me, but I'm to, limited to thirty consecutive days. What was the applicant's response to that? Did they have a response?
I think that's something the applicant addressed their response.
Okay, very good. Uh, because in their, that nice proposal that they put in there discusses uh, long, longer stays in that, so.
Then it would be a short term.
That's not an S T R. Yeah. So, um, my question then pertains to if they get this and we approve this, are they prohibited from longer stays or not? My understanding is they would be prohibited.
It can't be prohibited. It's, it's allowed, but it's not, but longer stays are not disallowed.
Check out, check back in?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And we have that going on in town now.
I'm just reading the statement, uh, from staff does not have issues or concerns with the quest, provided the following conditions. First condition is the specific, specific use permit is for a residential short-term rental known as vacation rental, defining in the resi- zoning ordinance as a dwelling unit that is used for transient logging for no more than seven guest rooms rented for compensation. And the next sentence, the length of stay is limited to not more than thirty consecutive days.
Yes, for a short-term rental.
It wouldn't be considered a short-term rental.
So they can float in now. Okay.
But it's not an S T R, so they would not have to pay the hotel.
My concern was what we were about to do would prohibit what they were also wanting to do because some of these could be lengthier stays.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I, I understand. I'm good. And don't need to bother.
They have the right now to rent. They are gonna gain the right to rent short-term.
I, I just understood that statement by saying they were losing the long-term and only going to short-term. But I'm good with it and I understand.
I'm, uh, I'm, uh, quite honest, I'm a little torn on this one. Um, we have, I don't know of another instance where we have a home in a subdivision. Now, this being a duplex and this only being one half of one duplex. Why is it only one half of one duplex? Why would we not apply for the whole thing? Curiosity? Because the property is the property.
That is something the applicant can address.
So how do we do that as a city though? Because that property is one. So we can zone in one duplex?
We're approving a short-term rental for a dwelling unit.
Okay.
So each dwelling unit has a separate address. So in the exhibits, it has that map that shows the property and it shows the dwelling units being rented. So it reflects back to that.
Okay. If they wanted the flexibility to do both sides, then they would need to apply for two dwelling.
Hmm.
You said the applicant's here?
Yes.
Yes, that.
Well, I mean, I think it pretty much answered as far as.
So would this be rented as a B and B type of situation?
Well, that's what it, and it states that it could be hosted or unhosed.
We don't call them B and Bs.
Yeah, they're just short-term rentals.
They, they had a very nice.
Presentation.
Presentation in there that kind of explained on how they intend to use it. Um, I don't know, we, we.
What, what surprised me a little bit was seeing a management company opposing it.
Competition?
I mean, I mean, if I'm the management company and you can get S T Rs, then if you got one, I'd want one, you know?
What reason did they get for opposing it?
Uh, transient visitors that are not accountable to anyone in the area, nothing to do with local tourism. Seems like a poor situation.
They just want to keep it long-term.
It's the same type of comments we hear in most, um.
I think, I think property management might, it's a competition issue. I think that's where they're.
They're not, you're not competing against a property manager though on short terms.
Well.
Because anybody along, they're actually helping the property management company because people looking for a lease, it's one fewer dwelling in the mix.
I don't know. We've always, I don't know. This is just my personal take on this and we've had a lot of requests for these type of rental units come up. And I personally don't agree with these in a high-density neighborhood. When there's more room to allow for parking and access and everything else, it's maybe workable. But in a high-density neighborhood, I just don't agree with it. We've always, I've always concerned myself with reciprocal damage from people who come and go and they don't have a permanent tie to the, to the neighborhood. And a tight neighborhood like this is pretty, pretty tough to.
Yeah.
To overlook.
The need of many.
I'd rather, I'd rather see something like this in more of a.
Rural.
Loft or apartment type situation.
I think the last one we did was on the old road for, uh, Steve Orstrom. And that was relatively open area.
We didn't have, I don't think we have any oppositions. I don't think we usually approve them with oppositions.
Correct. Also say, in, in going back to this neighborhood, we, we've opposed home-based businesses in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, and not that renting a house long-term is not a business. It's definitely an investment for that property owner. But this is more of a business model, short-term rentals versus long-term investment models for renting out to a year plus and, you know, in the future. I think this, not apples to apples, but kind of falls in that same vein of this place is a business.
Has anyone paid attention to how Waco handles this now? Because they had so many come into town, right? Especially around the Silo district.
Just depend on whose name was on the application.
No, it's not. What they did is, is they cite X amount of footage around one. So when you're looking for property, if you wanted to buy an S T R property to put an S T R, you would have to fit in the circle that another one doesn't overlap. And that's how they regulate the density of S T Rs in these neighborhoods. Actually, pretty smart. Other than, boy, the ones that, I mean, the, the property values to those properties are not fair. So for an S T R, somebody sells that property, that property goes skyrocket over the neighbor that can't get the same S U P because he's inside.
That's the standard. That's what other cities have done too. They've done like just do it as a five hundred thousand foot circle.
Yeah.
Then you have to, that's, you know, that's automatic. Then you have to do like a short-term rental application, gets an inspection here, that sort of thing. And it can be replicated by the city if they don't meet a certain criteria, like the standards for dwelling or something like that. I see places you have it.
You can pull the Waco map up and you'll see the circles, all of them specifically for S T Rs across the whole town. It's pretty deep. Um, but I don't know if it's really fair. Just because again, it's, I was here first and now you're out of luck, my neighbor, you know?
State law is gonna change it all for us anyway.
What's that?
State law is gonna ultimately change this all for us anyway.
You think so? Or just do away with the regulation?
Well, yeah, they're gonna keep us from prohibiting it or regulating it.
I don't know.
You think it's gonna?
It didn't stick.
S T Rs are becoming an issue with affordable housing. People are buying up homes that are for sale, converting them to S T Rs, and it's taking more and more homes out of the housing market. And you actually have investment groups that are doing that. So you're starting to see some pushback from that. Because of that reason, I mean, it nationwide, there's a, there's a housing shortage and a lot of us being drawn, driven by groups buying these up. Neither, some of them are turning them into rentals, but some of them are buying them up in clusters and turning them into short-term rentals.
There's still an effort to, to make this where it can't be regulated. That, that, that sort of, there's still a group out there lobbying.
Oh, yeah. There, there's always that. But, um, last legislative session, there was actually a push to make, um, accessory dwelling units to allow them on every property and to actually allow them to be separated out as a separate law.
We talked about that in California.
Yeah, California. Yes. And, uh, that goes back to the affordable house. So there, yeah, there's, there's, I think there's starting to be unintended consequences from a lot of this that you're seeing a lot of discussion now about lack of affordable housing because they're not homes anymore. They're investment properties and people who want a home can't find a home because they can't compete with the investment property.
Or if you're similar issue like this, they, they enacted state law that both governments cannot regulate further than what they could. Some of the state regulate short-term rentals erosion from property. So you have people laying seven, eight, nine, ten thousand square foot houses to short-term rentals. And of course, these are older neighborhoods on the ocean side and there's no H L A's.
Hmm.
So the next year, the legislature, maybe every year, the next year, the legislature probably. So they would have one extreme to install. There's also an act of regulation.
You always have the effect of the unintended consequences with these things. They, they start picking up momentum in a certain direction and then suddenly people go, wait a minute. So next session will be interesting how it comes out because I think you're gonna see.
So is the applicant also, is it Ashley?
Ashley here.
Is the property owner making sure I got that right? Sorry, I'm scrolling. I hate it when I click a certain spot and it jumps like fifteen pages.
Mm-hmm.
All right, sorry. I'll come back to it.
Ashley, you mind stepping up for a moment?
You have anything you'd like to add during this discussion that you're hearing?
Yes. Uh, first of all, thank you for your considerations and your time. Um, my name is Ashley Nutter and I'm a third grade elementary school teacher. And my husband and I, um, applied for this because we wanted, um, I had some time for the summer to go on school and I was looking into how to start a business. And this is one of the things that popped up on my research. And the reason that we selected Robinson is because we believe that the environment, the community that we are in is in an environment where, um, we would run the risk of car yard corners. We have a, um, we have the University of Gay delivery close by. We believe that this will bring in tenant staff. Um, our family members of those who attend the Bay Area University, um, I was listening to some of your concerns about, um, how the density of the short-term rentals in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood. When we applied for the lease with Jake Roy, which is the owner of the property, he suggested, or he did suggest, but he, um, offered, he said, you know, I have, I own four of the other duplexes on the street. If this works out, then we can, we can possibly be business partners. So to my understanding, it doesn't seem like there are many people applying to these areas because Jake Roy does have units that are empty.
You said Jake Roy?
Jake.
He's the owner of Chick-fil-A on Franklin.
Really?
Yeah, Jake Roy. Yeah. He used to live in our community, but anyway, I just want to clarify.
Yes, yes, Jake Roy. And, um, yeah, so that, that is just one of the points that, um, I thought about when we were talking about the density of short-term rental units in, um, in the neighborhood. Um, if there are any other concerns, I think more than half.
So one question for Mr. Harold. We have an owner's authorization letter signed by. Oh, I see it. Never mind. Jason Roy. Okay. Gotcha. Never mind.
I have a question, um, regarding, so again, this is for one half to become short-term rental. The other half is going to continue with it or as, as it is long-term rental.
Is that where you live? Do you live in the other?
No, no, I found it there. When we applied, um, Jake Roy did, uh, mention that that other half was big. So.
So you're leasing this to then sublease out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For income.
Hmm.
I also think that's not anything that we've seen before.
Mm-mm.
I also looked into this, this summer, this property that we bought in a, in a Bastrop as for a short, short-term rental. And my son Chris did a lot of research on what can and can't be considered residential area. And we can't exclude nightly rentals is what the state of Texas website currently says. I, I don't know. I personally think since the, the staff doesn't see any problem with it and planning and zoning has approved it and you have enough parking, it says here they do, to either approve it to now, tonight, or table it and talk about it later and see what we can and can't do as a council legally to prohibit if we, if people want to prohibit it. I personally don't want to prohibit it. But, uh, you know, I think we either need to prove it based on the recommendation of the, the planning and zoning and, uh, in the staff is made a recommend, right? Is that correct, David? You made a recommendation to approve it? I'm like, you know, go ahead.
The planning and zoning commission recommended approval. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval with staff conditions and with the other condition that was brought from a timeframe, but, um, the violations, they could limitation based on the time that it potentially happened on the site. So they took into consideration some of the things that you're talking about.
But you, your staff doesn't have a problem with it. I don't want to be part of deciding winners and losers, guys. That's one of my main things on this council. It is for citizens as much as we can be, but I don't think we need to decide because we like or don't like a particular thing that we're, we don't want it there. Well, we could be wrong about that too.
Most of these that we've approved, it is the owner's resident, like they own it or they're like right next door to the site that they're wanting the Airbnb. So it's like being monitored by them. They have some skin in the game because it's their property. That makes a difference.
And, and I agree with you. In this case, Jake Roy has said he's given you the approval to do it, correct?
Yes.
So I mean, at this point, it's not a problem. Couldn't we address it in the, in the, Craig as a city, can we address it if it becomes a problem?
Could I, could I ask something?
Yes.
So I know that they sign on all the property and it's, you know, but it's in our best interest, my husband and I, for this to work well. So we care about the place. It's not ours, but we do care about this working out for us. You know, we're, this would be our first one that we, that we do, but it's, it's, we, we don't want it to fail. We're not going to do anything out of the, um, any regulations that are, or restrictions that are put on there. We don't, we're not coming into destroying neighborhoods. We have, uh, we have set up a camera at the front door. We have a minute monitors installed. We're very proactive. We like to believe that we're very proactive with any issues that might arise.
David, does the city have any concern about, about them from their standpoint, about it being managed properly? That sort of thing? Apparently not since you're second year old four.
We might, we might have staff concerns if it was an annihilation, a lot of these at one location, but it's not.
Yeah.
So, um, there's no staff issues or concerns in regards to.
I will say this, just stating the obvious. I don't think I've ever seen a business owner come in or, you know, an investor come in and say, I don't care what happens or I don't want it to be profitable.
Yeah.
Every, everyone wants to see their investment do well, you know, bring in the right clientele, be a good investment for the city. That's, I mean, that's, that's just a business model you want, right? That's good, good for it. So what we, what we can anticipate is you're gonna hold on to this property for twenty plus years, right? The next person that comes in that takes over might not be as, you know, looking over all these things as, as you might, right? And we can't play scared.
Well, when her lease is up, Jake Roy will influence it to someone else, either short-term or long-term.
Yeah. Would you have to look at this as, as strictly the zoning? Because she could be here today and gone tomorrow. She could be here just for Jake Roy today and do this over and over and over again. No offense to you, but that's irrelevant in her position. It's the zoning itself. Does the zoning fit the property? That's what you gotta ask.
And I have an issue.
Because if she's not here tomorrow, then the zoning still stays. So it doesn't matter who owns the property or who's in charge of it at that time. The zoning still sticks. So it's our duty to determine, does the zoning fit?
And another, another thing, as, as well-intentioned as they are to getting the right caliber of clientele, that cannot be guaranteed. You can, there are people who are gonna say, I'm the best citizen.
Guarantee I can't guarantee.
Yeah, but I'm the. They could come up saying, I'm, I'm the best citizen in my, my home city, but they can come to your house and totally destroy it, not have a care in the world. That's what bothers me because it affects not that one property, everybody around them.
I guess my, my biggest thing is in a neighborhood like this, you get a single, single parent. You go home with a child and you have rotating door next door. Safety issues for my child next door, you know, we don't know who's, who's there, what kind of people they are. I mean, that, that's where I get nervous with short-term rentals in a highly dense. That's where I get nervous with short-term rentals in a highly dense residential neighborhood, right? I think there's a place for, for things like that. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with this.
I don't, I don't, it doesn't sit well with me having. Let me back up. What doesn't sit well is if this goes through, the door that it opens for many investors to jump in and say, huh, I'm gonna rent that duplex for two thousand because I'm gonna rent it for short-term for four thousand. And it's gonna happen everywhere. It's gonna, it's gonna be a domino effect.
We set a precedent here.
It's gonna set a, yeah, it's gonna open a door because now you've got people in here that can, I mean, that the Jake Roy's or the owners of the buildings are just getting their leases, you know, either A, they're gonna jump on board.
He's gonna make the same thing no matter what. You're, you're renting that from ten or X dollars.
His house except for Jake Roy's.
So he doesn't care if he wants to not renew and do it himself.
Right. That, that, that's what essentially could happen, but.
Sorry, interrupting.
Yep.
I think we all kind of just interrupted there by ourselves.
Yeah, well, it's a conversation.
It's a first for us. So we're, we're, we're talking through this one.
So, so I have a question. Just on that comment that we just all made, there's, you have a one-year lease on the property already? A two-year lease on it. So if this is highly successful, the, the hope would be to continue that, expand that. That's the thriving business model. Do you have any, any protections that the people that you're leasing from won't say, hey, that was a great idea. Thank you for playing. Your lease is up and now, now you're out the door and they take your business model. I'm, it has nothing to do with zoning, but a question that just popped in my head, what protection you have? You don't have to answer that to me or council.
Which is great. Your proposal is great.
This is a wonderful proposal.
Seriously.
And if you're owners, you're sitting in the background in the dark waiting for this to pass.
Copy paste this and writing on it.
Yeah.
If, if I read this right, he's already told you if this succeeds, he's got plans to do this expanding within that same area. So it's not just a one-up, a one-off item here. He's, he's advancing his thoughts down the line.
He told her that be partners. Jake Roy's a nice guy. Stand-up dude. Let me just put that on the record. You got no B.
I'm hearing Jake, but I'm seeing Jason signed.
Is it Jake?
He goes by Jake.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody that owns a Chick-fil-A.
He owns the one on Franklin and it's.
Oh, I know. He used to live in Chapman.
He did? Yes, he did.
He bought my first boat.
So, so I'm not so much worried about that, but I just think about that protection, that, that partnership you might wanna
I was just, I was just a country house, a little out of the way, not in the neighborhood.
Alright. I don't have an issue with this. I know, and I'm kind of, it's gonna seem like I'm going off against what I've done in the past on this one. Some of the issues we have with, with short-term rentals in neighborhoods are the type of people that it could bring, type of environment it could create. I don't have as high of opinion of this neighborhood that it's not already there, the issues that we're concerned about, a short-term rental bringing to the neighborhood. I just said that publicly.
No, I agree. There's some agreement there.
Well, then we have the right to limit it. If we don't want to add anymore, we don't add anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
If this doesn't work out, we just don't approve anything. I mean, I think since city staff's approved it, zoning apparently didn't have zoning. We're not zoning the whole neighborhood. We're just granting a one-time permit to this particular house.
We're zoning it to one half of one duplex.
Right.
Which in our map was wrong on what we published because it circled the whole duplex and then the two hundred or four hundred went out from there.
Here's a thought of, of, just, you brought it up already, but approving this one moving forward, but we also have, we talked about how Waco regulates it and maybe David knows some other places outside of the area that, that do a little bit better job regulating, maybe it's better than Waco. And between now and the next twelve months, we have this discussion on what we. Yeah, yeah. Sometime soon, have this conversation, how do we want to regulate it? And I think of, of other cities that regulate the number of, of bars in downtown areas. They, they, they put restrictions. We, not everybody can have a bar in a downtown square. St. Marcus, Texas limits it to twelve. And so. Right, right. And, and so there's a whole set of regulations that, that won't allow it to just overtake that district. So maybe we start having this further discussion of, how do we, how do we address this? Not just outright to say, hey, it's prohibited, but how do we address it so it's allowed, but with some control, some limits to how we do it and give staff some, some better tools.
Craig, could this be something part that we ask our legal advisor about as far as what we can legally allow or not allow?
We're the ones to determine. We're it. We're the ones to determine how we want to regulate.
But I'm saying what state law say about what we can and can't do as far as.
I think that it's up to us to, to push it and then determine if state law. We come up with what we want from a citizen's standpoint and citizen representation and then we
go from there.
Yeah, in terms of, of doing a special use permit, we, we don't have a lot of restrictions on what we could add to an S U P or deny an S U P. That's the, that's kind of the beauty of it. We, we have a lot of leadway in there, legal leadway in there, but I think we need to address it on a, on a bigger scale and, and get it legal on, hey, what, what can we do?
That's where I was going with that, Jimmy, is that if we deny something, can we legally deny it?
You can legally deny.
S U Ps and you go home, sleep well at night.
Okay.
Well, anything, if, if you decide you want to look at this in a bigger context, anything you change wouldn't apply to this because this is already applied and it's vested under the current ordinance. So you can't change anything.
I, I'm leading that way only because I, I I'm seeing, I'm seeing a, 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 a good business proposal.
Yep.
I'm seeing something that, that we haven't seen before that could work, that, that could. Again, I think there's unintended consequences. We talked about earlier how Craig mentioned the, that buying up all these homes is driving up home values and, and hurting affordable housing. That, that could be one of the unintended consequences. I don't think this one will, will determine that. So I, I don't think there's a lot of harm in it. If we put like the, the conditions on like the twelve month, we'll know by then.
Right, you're a tester.
Right. We'll, we'll know. And if before then, we can say, hey, we want to control that number, limit that number in residential neighborhoods to X, Y, and Z, we should have that answered before the floodgates open.
Yeah, I would disagree with that. You agree on this tonight, right? Jake or whomever, the word gets out, now next month, we have another one in front of us.
For ten.
Well, clock is ticking twelve months. We promise you, whether it's this neighborhood or another neighborhood.
You think the investors are just gonna jump on?
Oh, yeah.
One hundred percent.
So the test run is not, not a valid.
I, I don't know. How, how?
Test run is tonight.
Yeah.
It's just the.
How, how big a demand is short-term rental right now? I've heard mixed comments on that.
You can, you can rent the unit for half as long and get more than the rent you're getting on a long term.
But I hear people already switching back to long-term because they couldn't get that, that.
That's up to their, that's up to their and how they run. So if they're a premier host and that gets into all the short-term you know, business model and how they do that.
The, the, the Magnolia short-term rentals are booked for years.
You, yes, there, and there's ways that, I mean, if they don't have any, I mean, this is, they're gonna need some boost in getting a co-host and that's how you would get better rent and you would get the units rented.
This is Surrey Ridge. This is, this is Robinson, Texas. Lots of good stuff, but this is a premier location.
The biggest concern I have is the letters of opposition. So when we have them come in, we have not approved a single S T R that I know with letters of opposition in the neighborhood. And so we have always said, if the neighbors don't have a problem, we've been approving them. We have neighbors that have a problem. So for me, that's the hanging point. And regardless of the model and whatnot, I think it lies in, in the micro neighborhood. They get to choose as to if they want to allow it or not. And they live their own there and invested there, not us, right?
What bothered me a lot about this is the owner isn't here to back up his proposal. He said, he said, he said the surrogate to weather the storm.
It's, it's her business idea. It's, it's brilliant. I love the idea.
Promoted the idea to her initially.
No.
Well, we don't know that.
Correct. Didn't he tell you this is an option?
We don't know that and it's actually irrelevant.
That's, okay.
We, we don't know that.
I, to play devil's advocate, these oppositions really aren't true oppositions. Like one says, based on the advice of my management company, I oppose the short-term rental. And then the other one is the management company. So I wish it was like true residence.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about twelve percent of the.
No, I don't agree.
Tenants.
I just wish more people have responded to this.
You're gonna see some funny stuff written in there.
Yeah.
It's also less than twelve percent of the surrounding properties. If we're just calling it two, not three, it's less than twelve percent. I don't know. I've always said that I, I, just as your point was, the opposition speaks, you know, clearly. This was a hard one for me because I, I like what I see in terms of.
I do too.
A potential. I think there's some, some.
I like the idea, the presentation. Everything that she's brought together is really smart. It's a, it's a twist of what we have seen. Listen, we've been doing this a while and I had seen one come through like this and I I congratulate you for, for that. On the flip side, I'm still torn with the, the opposition and knowing if.
It's just.
It's gonna come down to the minute for me to vote.
It's, 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 open the floodgates is something we don't want.
One of the, one of the side benefits to the city as far as an income standpoint, they have to report it to hotel tax.
Yeah, we hope we do. Would we trouble with that with people not actually?
I'm saying. Can't even get a hotel.
Ideally, in theory, yeah.
You know. I'm gonna make a motion. You can always either agree or disagree. I'm gonna put it out there. Make a motion to deny the project twenty-four dash zero 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 four four five concerning a specific use in order to allow for a short-term rental as a use a duplex, two-family, two-F residential district on point zero three one acres, approximately addresses three oh four one Buckskin Lane. Surrey Ridge, Phase Three, Lot Six, Block Four, Acres Point Three Zero Zero Six.
Hold a second. Give me just a second for my thoughts before we call a vote.
Okay.
I was gonna ask you too, is it possible to table this?
Not any longer.
Not anymore. That table.
We have a motion.
There is something on the table now.
So we do have a motion to deny ordinance twenty-two four dash twenty-five. Any further discussion? Any other points?
Yes, my opinion is we should wait and make a.
We, we can't wait. We, we, we've got a motion to vote.
I'm for waiting. That's my, you asked, do we have other things to say? I'm for waiting to see for us to make a better decision on it rather than just, we got approval by the zoning, we got the city staff doesn't have a problem. I don't know. I don't. Not gonna vote for it.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, um, Ms. Cryer, would you poll the council, please?
Roger.
Yes. I'm for the denial.
For the denial.
I, correct.
Yes.
Michael George?
Yes.
I'm last.
Tiger?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Bert?
No.
No vote. Don't need a tiebreaker. We have a denial. Lucky. Lucky. Okay. Okay, so unfortunately, we have denied your application tonight. Okay? All right, item thirteen, conduct a public hearing, consider possible action on ordinance twenty-two four dash zero two six, providing for amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four budget to reflect appropriation transfers as outlined in Exhibit Eight of the ordinance. Public hearing opens at eight oh eight. Mr. Roman.
So this is a amendment to the current year budget for the fiscal year that ends the thirtieth of September. And the specific changes are outlined in the Exhibit A by line items, but I'll just briefly kind of summarize them. In the general fund, revenues increased by forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-three thousand. That's just based on sales taxes, continue to come in at a higher amount than projected. The increase in expenditures include the payment to the Woodmont Corporation, the three-eighty agreement we approved in twenty-twenty-two. There's also additional funding to municipal facilities for air conditioning units that were replaced and also some maintenance to do on our sirens. And then there are also some unexpected maintenance on equipment, specifically tires on a zero-turn mower on, in the Parks Department. There was no money budgeted for. So those changes there in the utility fund, projected revenues increased by two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, five fifty-one with most, most of that increase coming from hydrant water sales and interest income collections year-to-date. Total expenses are projected to increase four-hundred-and-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight. Biggest increase is the annual B R A raw water contract payment, as I mentioned in the pre-council meeting. We entered that contract last October, September, October, and we got the first invoice in October and made the payment in November. I think we just assumed that the payment for the next year would be made in November, but they actually required those payments to be made in September. So we will actually be making two payments this year. The payment we make September fifteenth, by September fifteenth this year for the coming twelve months. And so next year's budget, the amount is in there for the payment to be made next September. So that is two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand of the total increase. There was also an increase on the cost to W Mars, that our flows were up above what we projected. I think part of that is due to inflow and infiltration that it happened back in May with the real heavy rains. But regardless, it is, we are billed for the amount of water. We do our projections based on historical flows, but we're billed on actual flows. So we saw an increase there. And let's see. And then also there was a carryover from last fiscal year. We had ordered a generator and transfer switches at all our well sites to meet a state requirement that we'd be able to continue to provide water should there be an electrical outage for an extended period of time. The generator came in last fiscal year when the money was budgeted, but the transfer switches were delayed and so we did not receive the, start receiving those until this current fiscal year. So that money did not carry over to this year. I think it was first quarter of the current year is when those actually started coming in. So that's the adjustment there. And then there's a small adjustment in the debt service fund. It's to increase the fees we pay, the agent fees by a thousand and fifty. And that budget, the only reason we're making such a small increase there is that budget is pretty tightly regulated. And if we go over the budgeted amount, then the auditors. There's not a lot of wiggle room in the debt service fund. We know in advance what the payments are and we know what the interest is. So we budgeted all that, but these fees went up. So it would actually push us over budget for the year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Anyone on the public like to speak on the budget appropriation transfers? Fun stuff. Speak now. All right, we'll close the public hearing at eight twelve. Counsel, have any questions, comments continuing from the workshop from earlier?
I've just got one. On the transfer switches, we put those on over last year. Didn't you get them in this year?
Well, they've been installed.
They've been installed.
Yeah, they just, they came in, they came in and were installed there for October first, but the funding had been appropriated in last fiscal.
So was there an increase of cost that was applied to this or no?
No, no, they just. A lot of that stuff was probably delayed because of COVID and all that.
Right.
Supply chain. And so the generator came in, but we couldn't use it till the transfer switches were put in and those were delayed. So, so we did not receive those and they weren't installed until after October.
They were purchased under the original.
But they were purchased under the original contract?
They were part of the original contract.
Okay.
Were not available to be. And once September thirtieth hits here, everything shuts down, goes away and all the P O's are canceled and everything else will be redone.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Got a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve, let's see, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two six, providing for amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget to reflect appropriation transfers as outlined in Exhibit A of the ordinance.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-six as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, this is, uh, moving to agenda item number fourteen. This is in regards to project number twenty-four dash zero 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 two seven one. This is a final plat for the Robinson Industrial Park Phase Two to create two industrial lots in two separate blocks on a hundred point seven acres located along Robinson Industrial Park and Western Star Drive. Mr. Harrow?
Usually get the hearing.
You're a little bit.
Yeah, on the agenda night is the final plat. Area in red indicates the area of the final plat exceeds within industrial zoning. All the zoning requirements are met, uh, with this plat. So it does, it exceeds the minimum requirements. Initially, this is a preliminary plat on the screen right here. Counsel approved that with, uh, April of twenty-three. The area in red is reflective of the final plat. You can see there are four lots here. The final plat changes from four lots to two lots and lots of bigger in size. And that's the only change associated with the, between the preliminary and final plats. Staff has no issues or concerns with the request, uh, provided the following conditions are, uh, brought forward by the council. The staff comments, which there are still several left because we have to review on this before you approve it under the state shoplot requirements. There are still staff comments to be addressed and those should be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning and development director before recording. And also, um, a twenty-five foot drain easement along the Northwestern property line, Lot One, Block One needs to be provided for as well. Again, staff would ask that you bring that forward. You choose to approve this, these two items. Planning and zoning condition recommendation, they recommend the approval five zero with the staff comments to be addressed in regards to it. The twenty-five foot comment that I had for comment number two was added in later after initial further down review of the plat. So that's why the P C C did not bring that condition forward because at that time that wasn't a condition. So I wanted to make new aware of that. And with that said, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Questions for Mr. Harrow?
No questions.
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion. Motion to approve project twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two seven one, a final plat for Robinson Industrial Park Phase Two to create two industrial lots on two separate blocks on eighteen point twenty acres located along Robinson Industrial Park and Western Star. Uh, with the conditions that, uh, do we need to add that the conditions for staff comments being?
Right there on the board.
Staff would ask this condition to be brought forward. No, hang on. Staff comments and, uh, are addressed to the satisf, to the satisf, satisfaction of the planning and development director before reporting. Is that all right, Mrs.? Oh, and to add a twenty-five foot drain easement along the Northwestern property line, Lot One, Block One.
Okay.
I wish you went to Jeremy. I'll second.
You got it.
You got it.
Got Birch's second. Uh, we got a motion to approve the final plat with the conditions as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider impossible action on a plat vacation. Thank you. I guess that was their item, huh?
Yeah.
Consider impossible action on a plat vacation for Espino or Espino addition, Lot One, Block One, in order to vacate an existing one-lot plat in its entirety approximately addressed at ten ninety-two East Rocket Road, also known as McClintock County appraisal jurisdiction property ID since three seven nine two five nine.
This is simply a plat vacation. The area in blue outlined, I showed on the map there in the center of the zoning map is the lot to be vacated. So one lot subdivision, seven point nine acres in size. A G zoning requires plating for lots of five acres in size. It only requires, actually it only requires plating for lots of five acres or less in size. So this lot exceeds the requirements. They can vacate the current plat. The basis for them vacating this is right here. This is the original plat. It was approved in September of sixteen. The area in blue is a part of the plat. If they vacate that plat, they can take that blue section and merge it with the unplated lot that's in red up there. And still with that subtraction, the lot is still bigger than five acres. They don't need a plat. Based on the review of this and code and looking at our codes, staff has no issues or concerns regarding the request. P C C recommended approval on August fifteenth of this item. I'm here for any questions you may have. Thank you. Plat vacations themselves are very rare. The first plat vacation in almost twenty years.
So it's, so is it bad for me to say, I really don't know what we're doing here or why?
Yeah, we're gonna need some greater detail and explanation.
I can elaborate further if you'd like.
That would be good. First in twenty years, that would be good to hear.
All they're doing basically is this lot is platted now. They're wanting to take portions of that of this lot that's platted and, um, merge it with the lot in red, which is not plated lot. So they have to vacate this, they cannot create a subdivision doing that because it doesn't have right-of-way access. The easiest way to get them to do that with a flat lot is to vacate the plat. So it's unplatted. Then you break that piece off, that add it to the other piece or some platted.
And you would want to do that why?
It's a situation, it, there's no, there's no detriment for, for them seeking the request from the city's stamp, from the city code standpoint or any, any kind of, uh, pattern in that area.
Is this, was this plated as a flag lot originally or was it plated as having a ingress egress? Cause this, cause the blue area is the plated area, correct?
It was the whole area, the eastern area.
It's right there on, it's right on the crew.
And they're wanting to back out.
Okay, so this area in blue is part of the plated lot as you see here. So when it becomes unplatted, maybe take this portion of the unplated lot and merge it with in red, which this blue area is actually this portion. Oops.
Touch the road button.
There at the very top.
So the road is at the top of this proposed plat here. So what I would intent, what I would see is, is they're taking that land off, putting it with their residual and probably have a lot to sell to remain. Okay, that's making sense. So they've got one lot and they don't want to sell all of it. They want to keep X proportion, X amount. So they're cutting this plat off. It's two plated lots now like that?
One plated lot.
It's one plated lot.
But they're just gonna cut off that, so they're replating?
No, they're vacating.
They have to vacate the plat because they can't, they can't replat because the situation where the lot is in front of right-of-way, they replat it, break that piece off. Also, the lot's not platted next to it. And also that lot is in the city and incorporated counties, so it off leaves things greatly.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, typically what happens, I've actually done a couple of, uh, plat vacations. Typically somebody comes in, they want to do something on a piece of property, they buy it, they plaid it, then they don't do it. And so it sits there and it's a plated lot. Then somebody else comes along and buys it. They want to do something different with it. It doesn't work within that, that plat. Like in this case, they want to break off part of it and associate it with a different property and then maybe sell the rest of it. They can't do that unless they plat all that other property, which is substantially large and it doesn't require plating under ordinance or state law. So the quickest way is to vacate it.
Quite expensive to do that too.
So, yeah, it gets, it gets very expensive. And with large pieces of land, you don't necessarily know what you're gonna do with it long-term. So it's really a case of somebody plated it because they intended to plaid it and then that never happened. And now the current owner doesn't really want to go forward with that plan. So they vacate it and it goes back to being just ag, unplated ag. Well, I think that's their ultimate goal is they want to cut it off, but the fact that they're vacating it, it doesn't really, they could come back and do some, anything they want as long as this five acres are large, right?
But they're not vacating or only vacating what's in blue?
No, they're vacating the entire plat.
Okay, what's in blue?
That's the portion they want to break off after the area in red.
Where is the area in red compared to the area we see in blue? Can you distinguish that?
Right next to it.
It's right here.
It's like a Texas flag.
Look, the area in red includes the blue now? Does the area in red include the blue now? Can you distinguish where the area in red is in relation to where the blue is on the map?
We need the pointer.
All this area here.
Oh.
What I would say here is, in the terms of the plat vacation, what they want to do with it really isn't matter at this point. Once it's vacated, it just becomes unplatted ag property. And if they want to partition in anything smaller than five acres, it would have to be platted and it would have to have street frontage. So they're just undoing the plat from the past. Whether they want to break off the back part of it and associate it with something else, it doesn't really matter because it just goes back to this, same as all the surrounding ag property. It's unplatted.
Part of it, I think it gives the city a little, it gives them a second look at it next time when it comes to their replat. Hey, I want to plaid it next time and now, ooh, now there's a whole new set of rules in place that.
Listen, my question's about plating and why, it's just better understanding of, I've never heard of anything like.
Yeah, it's, it's typically. It's typically because somebody wanted to do something with it and that never happened. Now somebody else owns it. They don't want to do that with it.
We have the surveyor in the back.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. Tell us about this plat vacation.
He knows what's going on.
Where are we going?
This is Mr. Espino's track right here in the blue.
Can you give it back to the?
Two thousand seventeen, they plated this lot and didn't need to be plated because, like you said, it's greater than five acres. It's an ag, never needed to be plated. Most of it had to be plated because city away, where it's like ten acres plus. So it's confusion. Where the company was just platted. Well, he sold, go back to that other one of the plat, the blue. He sold this portion already to his neighbor, which puts this plat in violation. So we're just trying to get everything back into code here. And so this is a sixty acre tract over here. So he, the guy just wanted to buy that portion from him because he wasn't using it to build the back here. And which leaves the remainder of our lot still greater than five acres, which means it doesn't need to be plated. And we, we, like typically if someone cuts out a plated tract, we have to do a replat. See, because you're not supposed to alter a plated lot. So when I brought it to Mr. Harrow, Mr. Harold, he told me, he's just like, hey, this is, this is gonna cause a lot of issues. He's just vacating. That's why we're here.
All right.
Well, and I would say that also prior to two thousand, I think it was eighteen, we changed the ordinance. Robinson City ordinance required that in order to build on any lot, the lot had to be plated regardless of size. We changed that to match the state law with the five acre threshold. But, and I know because I have five acres and I wanted to build a shop and I had to plaid my property to build the shop for my wife. For, for these students had that, because it was the only way I could get a permit to build the thing. So. But we were running in that a lot with agricultural properties where somebody come in and said, I want to build a house on a hundred acres. It's like, we gotta plaid a hundred acres. And it gets really expensive to plaid a hundred acres.
So when you say that there's no negative for the city, why not?
Yeah, for sure.
I'll make a motion with proof of it.
They're gonna resist the violation.
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Can I make a motion? Are you making one?
I am making.
Mr. Birch already has a first. Do we have a second?
No, I'll second his motion to approve.
Okay, motion is to approve the plat vacation. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, thanks for coming to know.
Thanks for clearing all that up.
Scooting on now to item nineteen, the other items were under consent agenda. Is continued questions and discussion only on proposed fee schedule changes from the May, July, and August, counsel. I believe, I think the last question I had on that is we ran a scenario on, uh, existing versus or previous versus the proposed. I looked at all this dead gum stuff too. Can you pull attachment aid up? I don't see it on here.
Uh, go back down, sorry, keep going down.
I don't have that in my back.
In the ordinance?
Oh, you know what? I'm in, I'm in consent on items because I forgot we skipped. Two fifty. There we go.
What attachment are we looking on?
Page two fifty?
Two fifty.
It's actually after, it's actually after the ordinance. The ordinance is attached.
Oh, but this isn't running. Did we run a scenario?
Yeah, there's three different scenarios on there. The first is to, um, one is land use change and planned development zoning of ten acres of land. Another one is land use change and standard rezoning of ten acres. And then another one is develop to twenty-five lots subdivision with infrastructure. And then a new twenty-five thousand square foot commercial building on one acre. And then you see the existing fees and the proposed fees with the differences. These things get put the wrong format in here. We gotta work on getting this turned.
It's when I like my laptop so I can just hit one button, writes the shit.
Aren't you special?
I mean, that was driving nuts. Then, that and any bigger, um, fire screen.
I'm used to playing some efficient practice. So it makes it easier to print in that version.
All right.
Have you want to borrow these?
No, no, I got the bifocals on today. I can see.
Well, just, just for future reference, the, Mr. Harold, for future reference, the P Z Z doesn't approve your budget, the council.
Oh.
If you want to keep somebody happy.
He earned his money tonight, huh? Question on the, uh, on the planned, are we doing P D D? Is that what it's called now? Yeah, okay, so going from four hundred to twelve fifty, that's just our in-house fees? Is that what, because we think that what we're looking at is amount of time that staff spends on a P D D?
Typically with a ten acre development, it's a large development.
Okay.
You're talking about, if you're dependent on the size of lots, you're talking five thousand square foot lots, that's six to seven lots, you're talking on acre, that's sixty, seventy lots. So that could be a, that could be a bigger development. That's, um, like I said, it would be, that's kind of on the larger side of what you guys kind of do now, but that's possibly not happening.
That goes from four hundred to seventeen fifty. Yeah, that's not bad.
Only four hundred, we're not coming anywhere close to covering our current costs related to that.
So land use change and standard rezoning on ten acres of land. What about a, um, maybe even a, is that smaller than ten acres? Does that cover that as well or larger than?
So I think that it's, uh,
Just like, what, what I'm getting at is let's say we got an ag property out there and they just want to change it from ag to RE. What's that? What, what, what are they getting hit with? And it's, and it's three acres or five?
Uh, it was, uh.
No, it's coming from ag. But it's, say it's a bigger piece and they're. But it's, say it's a bigger piece and they're doing a replat and do a three acre, just one lot.
They want to take three acres.
Um, it's a situation where the cost is lower because it's not a PDD, so there's a lot less review. Uh, they were just doing like three acre zone change, less than five acres, I think it was five hundred, five and ten is seventy fifty, more than ten would be a thousand.
So five hundred, I think currently now we're about four hundred, right? Okay.
So a twenty-five percent increase on the low end roughly?
Yeah, not horrible, that's, I mean. It's a little tough to even pay four hundred on some of these changes, especially when we had the blanket rezone and they got to come in and.
Yeah, we were forcing them to.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so I know this previous discussion was finding that balance between, you know, uh, one in the spectrum is a hundred percent development cost being covered, uh, through these fees. And then also not stifling any, any level of, of development, running off development. Toughest question I'm ever gonna ask. Your proposed fees, does that, is that a one hundred percent cover all of your, actually, that, that's where your target was with your proposed fees?
Air, my PDDs can have multiple reviews and all that sort of as well.
Yeah, they typically do.
And then, so Birch, to your, your point, you, you kind of mentioned that it's not as, it doesn't sting as bad on the development.
The thing is, is all you just, obviously, we want to be able to cover our costs. But at the end of the day, if you can't move your property, it doesn't matter how much you're charging, right? So you want to be pro development, but you don't want to be giving things away. Need to be covering your costs, but yet we're competing against cities that are really close to it and, and cities that are coming, especially from the south. So you just want to be, you just want to be competitive, if you want, if you want to stay on the edge of, yeah, we want to be at Robinson. The other fees are good and they're good to deal with and they're pro development.
But you don't want to be taken advantage of either.
Correct. You don't want, you don't want to be taken advantage of where your citizens are putting the bills on, on these things.
Well, the, the other thing you want to keep in mind, I'm not seeing it here, but my last city was, it was a problem with apartments. We had multiple planned developments come in where they wanted to redo apartments or they want to do some combination of commercial plan development. And so they would, our cost was so low, they would do speculative rezoning and rezone it. And then nothing would ever, and you, a lot of times you knew these folks don't have the wherewithal to pull off this project. But there was no way to stop them from applying for the rezoning and getting it. And now you've got a piece of property that is zoned for a specific use on the planned development. So we actually pushed the fee up considerable to discourage the speculative plan development. Where people were just going, well, there's a piece of property, I think it could be this, and they come in and rezone it and then. No, that was for planned developments. They would come in and rezone it to a specific planned development. There's one that's still sitting up there, it's, it's like forty something acres near a school that's zoned very specific for residential and apartment community, that somebody's going to have to rezone to develop it because they probably, nobody.
Can't we put stipulations for that to fall off after a time, just like we do for STRs? Saying, hey, yes, you've got this PDD, but it only is good if you break ground.
It's not just planned development, you, you can come in and just rezone land to something else on speculation. And then it turns out nothing happens and then somebody comes back and says, well, gosh, I wish it wasn't what it was originally zoned.
That's council's issue. They should be looking at what the proposed plan is according to the, um, future land use map and knowing, does the zoning fit the case? And if it fits, then it doesn't matter if it's, you, you're zoning it to the highest and best use. So if you zone it to that and it doesn't develop, it's not the council's fault, it's, it's the market, it's just the market.
I'm not saying it's the count, but if your cost is too low, it's too easy for people to go ahead and fill out the application, throw the money at it, do a rezoning, and if nothing happens, now you've got a property that probably, someone else is gonna have to go through the rezoning process to get where it is.
Are we having those issues?
You have an awkward development.
We haven't yet, but as things pick up, you start getting more special. So you want to cover your fees and everything, that's the primary purpose. But if you're, if you're too low, where you're not covering your fees and you're almost giving your zoning away, you may get the folks that, why not? You know, it's only gonna cost me a hundred bucks to rezone this property. And you end up with a bunch of property that's zoned, it's like, you know, and if council's doing their job, you shouldn't.
Correct. If your council is, is looking at the job and knowing, I might listen, you can preach to me all day what you want to do. You should be looking at what the specific zone request is and does the zone fit? If the zone fits, it doesn't matter who's there, who's pitching. So, I don't know, it just, I'm not afraid to speculative zoning. If you've got an agent in here that wants to try to push something and say, hey, let's, can we get this zoning and then let me go sell it? And then he can't sell it, well, it's four hundred bucks or seventy, hundred dollars, he'll try again and come back and do it. I mean, I would rather have commercial agents pushing that envelope, trying to make something happen versus not. And it just, you know, now, what you're saying is it could be sitting.
Yeah. Well, like I said, it just, it adds that additional process, the property where maybe it would have been better, maybe the most appropriate zoning route was there, but somebody comes in and somebody comes in with a good, it sounds good, sounds really promising.
Let's say they come in and three years ago, that was a great idea, or a very fast growing part of town, now things have changed. And this plan has a five or ten year expiration date on it. Now we have an area of town that doesn't really need to develop pattern now for this area.
Outlet, outlet malls.
Yeah, there's.
Water, water parks. Yeah, I mean, there's, so it's just, it's just, again, you want to encourage that, but you just want to be careful that you're, you're not so low in it that.
But we hadn't had that problem in the past currently.
We have not, that I'm aware of.
We haven't had speculative zoning yet.
We've had a few, but my experience being in the Austin area, the hotter the market, the more viable, the more these are going to be.
Sure.
Yeah. And, and one of the things you're running to is you'll have somebody come in and do that. And then somebody comes along that has the wherewithal to develop it and they can't because they may not want to wait to go through the process again, or they will want to, you know, there may be a property over here, they don't have to rezone. They're trying to decide between two properties, one in Robinson and one somewhere else.
So there's a question, let's say somebody came in and, and speculative or not, they tried to do the zone and it failed, or it zone changed. And then another developer comes in and wants to develop and do a zone change, is there a waiting period?
Well, if it's been rezoned, there's no waiting.
What if it failed?
Well, if it failed, there.
If it fails, you got the six, if, if you use the council, disapprove it, you got a six month window.
Period of any zone or the same zone request?
Any zoning request on that.
By the same owner?
See, that's a little tough too.
It goes to a different owner and maybe.
Especially on commercial property.
Yeah, yeah, that's, if it changes hands, you don't penalize the new property in a way. You, y'all wanted to do something that wasn't allowed, but I've got exactly what the city needs and wants, council's behind it. But I gotta wait six months? That's when they go to the next town.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Yeah, that's when they go next door.
That's, there's unique circumstances whereby I think there's, you know, in the constitution of our city attorney, there's ways to make things happen. Change our code of route to reflect a certain circumstance where that petition happened.
Yeah, but that, that, that takes time. I mean.
If it's a different app, not, not necessarily an app, let's just say it's a, a pretty good commercial agent. And they've got somebody on and they're going through, will they fall off? That fell through. Well, they go get somebody else for this project, but you know, that they did a slightly different zone or they need a PD. I mean, I would hate that they didn't have to wait.
I mean, yeah. I, I, I'll, I agree with that thought. Also still kind of lean towards the thought of capturing the exact cost, you know, hundred percent of, of, of the development fees. So the hundred percent of the cost of the development through these fees, I still lean on that. I don't know if we want to back off a little bit, but I, I, I would say we stay with it. Again, most homeowners here in town would benefit from any commercial, even residential development. We, you know, today's infrastructure gets paid for by tomorrow's, you know, new neighborhood. And, and that'll be true in twenty years, that, I just don't foresee that model changing. But at the same time, they're not, it shouldn't be financially invested in those fees and development. And we're splitting hairs, I mean, I mean, you're doing a ten acre prof- property, you're, you're in the, the tens of millions, if not more. Two grand ain't hurting that problem.
These, no, these, these numbers, I don't think would scare off any legitimate developer. These numbers will scare off somebody who, how hard can it be to be a developer? Yeah, I mean, those are the folks that sometimes you get where the, I watch the show on TV, it doesn't look that hard, I think I'll go be a developer.
Do it on YouTube.
So these are fixed prices, these aren't, these aren't, this isn't a scenario based on size or cost or presumed costs or whatnot. These are flat, these are rates based, right?
I think some of those zoning applications are based on the size.
They're based on the, some of the zoning is based on the size of lots you're wanting to, or if it's a PDD or not.
And a lot of that just has to do because you've got a bigger notification area.
So like a, like a one hundred or two hundred acre site is what?
Um, and if it goes more than ten acres, it doesn't go, there's a more than ten acre size, it doesn't go any higher than more than ten acres.
Gotcha, okay, fair enough, okay.
Are these pass-through costs for a developer anyway?
Yeah, they currently are, but now it's not. These are going to be fees.
The, the customer.
It's all costs, every cost. Mr. Master George, when you buy a house or you get into a commercial, every dime is passed to the tenant or the buyer.
Okay.
Every free t-shirt you ever won in your life.
He never gave me a t-shirt.
What I'm trying to say is, is, is in my world, it's very important to try to keep those costs down because you want to be able to keep your cost down to your client, your customer. Because you're, again, you're competing with other cities.
Right.
You know?
And other developers as well.
And other developers, mainly, mainly cities, it's location, location, location. So your, your developers aren't, you're not really competing there so much, I mean, not in our town so much.
Unless you're going up against a guy like D R Horton or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta be talking about large developments. We really haven't seen large developments yet to where this comes into play. And that's what I'm, I'm not talking about anything that we really got going on today, it's really, what are we looking at coming? When we start seeing a three hundred acre developer come in and you have four thousand homes, you have a Gerald. You have something pop up.
And you have all the development everything she got put into place and the PDD zoning and all that, nine yards.
Not that we want a Gerald, but.
And I worked out before Elgin, here is the little town and the east side Boston is now showing the buildings.
Hado Taylor.
That's the fastest growing section, section in Texas.
Take a look at what's going on.
Yeah, look at, look at Elgin's fees, you want to see some fees.
I don't, I want their sausage, that's all I want.
Yeah, I think the, I think the last legislative's changed, I told Mr. Harold that Elgin was probably responsible for the last session where they changed. Having to tie it to cost because they really.
They're trying to, I think it's an attempt to prevent what's happening in other cities uh, in that area where they're just overwhelmed and you can't, you can't keep up with the existing infrastructure. I mean, to handle congestion, there's not enough shopping, gas stations, grocery stores, but they're just being inundated with homes. And I think they're just trying to control that, hold it back, but.
We, I mean, yeah, we have the area developed, it's for muds, how to do the infrastructure and largeening the infrastructure. So in other words, we got down, it required eighteen inches of sewer, we had a twenty four inches of sewer there, we oversized it. These were all big agreements that we had to approve. And, I mean, we got into millions of dollars, sometimes they'd have to pay us just through certain things. I had to get a check one time of a million dollars.
For development fees?
Yeah.
Can you take another one?
No, they don't blink.
Our taxpayers would really like to see that. Okay. Well, we've seen this now for three months. Want to push it to twenty twenty-six or? I'm kidding, Mr. Harold's ready.
We're gonna have to at least get that part of that pass-through cost for the, uh, inspections and all that.
Yes.
Passed, because that or we're gonna have to raise everybody's taxes to cover the cost of that.
Well, then can we bring that to the next meeting and what you need?
We have to publish.
We have to do a, we have to, in order, we have to have a public hearing, I think.
Just do it November, December? It's in November, December, soon enough?
Yes.
Or October?
Oh, so you can do October?
Yes.
Yeah, we just can't do two weeks from now. I don't think we could get everything published.
We have to publish, yeah, we have to do a public hearing, I think we have to publish two notices within a certain time.
So maybe the second meeting in October. Probably the, that's, we should be able to get it by then.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff on that item?
Just for the fees being not too high, not too low, so that we don't discourage, we need development.
I think, I think we're getting a hundred percent is what I heard. Hundred percent of the actual cost of what it incurs, so I think we can't ask for any more.
That's good. Yeah, if we get one of those four thousand lot ones, we may not get a hundred percent of cost.
Million dollar check.
I mean, that, you're, you're hiring if you, you get that, or you're seven.
Yep.
We're gonna have to have a Samsung built here nearby, where that'll have to, I tell you.
Easy, that takes a lot of water.
You should see it, how it's developing now.
And when Samsung plant in Taylor, announced it, the next day, we had somebody proposing two thousand.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, the, the Tesla effect, the Walmart effect, that, that's coming, it might not be tomorrow, like you just said, but it's coming, already, already it's coming.
Yes.
And the usual thing is encompass two counties, then you will travel San Basra County at the same time.
Thank goodness we only have one county.
Yeah.
Can I guess it would be Basra?
And only ten percent of the developers in Travis.
Cause I have property here.
Okay, in an effort to get out by nine, any other comments or questions on that? Good, all right, item twenty is mayor and council member updates and requests for items to be placed on future agendas. Mr. Birch? Mrs. McLean?
Uh, I hopefully just include a discussion on the next meeting about like the future of Peplo and how we want that to move forward.
Peplo Park? Like with the splash pad?
The splash pad.
Okay. You start the fundraising effort yet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's how we started it. Mr. Stavener?
Yes.
Okay.
Due to the potential congestion issues of traffic, the November council meeting, will that affect the election traffic as far as our access to our building? Because I know in other elections, we've had an awful difficult time getting in and out of this area just because of election traffic, will that affect our first November meeting? And can we adjust it if needed?
In the past, even on the, even on the national, what you're talking.
Because this is gonna be a, a national election cycle.
Yes, I had to work really far one time.
Where do you think Jeremy parked?
Right here.
Yeah, we should all ride share.
I'm just throwing this up for consideration.
Something, we can provide tax.
All right, I'll take it.
I'm coming to get you.
You don't mind riding in the backseat of a police car, we can send the police.
No problem at all.
Jim's been there before.
Okay, that's it, that's all I've got.
Mr. Riders?
I, I have two. Obviously, from our discussion tonight on STRs, we are not prepared or ready for what is probably coming anyway. And so I think we do need to, it may not need to be on any agenda anytime soon, but maybe it's just something staff starts working on, but finding out what that looks like in terms of how we regulate these short-term rentals. See what Waco and other surrounding cities are doing and we start, Mr. Harold's done a great job of updating our, our ordinances and he's been working his butt off, uh, I hate to add more to that. Uh, I hate to add more to that, but I think this is something that, it's been contentious almost every time, but the, the requests continue. So maybe we put something in place on how we're gonna handle that. So it's not so.
Advancing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, it's probably going to be always, but, but they're not popular. Um, I, I love them. I enjoy them. Uh, I voted against tonight to stay consistent with how I voted in the past, but it's still coming. They're, they're gonna be more. So I think we just need to have that. The second one would be a discussion surrounding a, a youth sports complex for the city. I'll save the stump speech for that moment, but in short, uh, Robinson has a youth football organization, a youth basketball organization that get tremendous support from the school district in terms of facility access. Those programs are thriving, uh, in terms of, of being able to uh, meet the needs of, of, of the youth. The Robinson Little League is in a death spiral in terms of facilities. Um, and, uh, they need some help. And, and so I'd like to have a discussion regarding a youth sports complex, um, a city-owned youth sports complex and on the next agenda. I also emailed um, Misty a paper that I wrote regarding the impact of, of youth sports uh, in our community. Um, so I asked her to forward it to you. Also, take fifteen minutes, read it, burn it, throw it away after you're done, make your jokes, whatever you need. It's the first paper I've written in twenty years, so I've made a few already. Yeah, yeah. But anyway, um, the article, the, the paper is actually gonna get published, um, in good governance worldwide. So uh, kind of cool, but it also speaks to this topic. If, I gave him an advanced copy, but, uh, did I give it to you as well? No, I'm sorry. Staff, please. I, I, I think I said I was going to and then was kind of embarrassed to do it. Uh, again, the first paper I've written in a long time, so. Anyway, I'd like to have that discussion, um, regarding a sports complex.
Okay, anything else?
What about the mayor? You got anything?
I don't have anything. I actually will not be at the regular meeting for October fourth. I've let Craig and Misty know already. Um, I hate that I'm gonna miss it, but I am going to be attending my first ever brother's trip with two of my brothers uh, that are in their upper sixties and, uh, we just said we're gonna do it and we're not gonna miss it, so. Yep.
And I'll just comment, you asked for a presentation on pad law, that'll be the next agenda. I couldn't get it done for this.
I completely, yeah, that was.
It's really more on chapter two eighty-three.
We adjourn?
Uh, when is the next MPO? The MPO board meeting with luncheon, I think it's the nineteenth. That's what I thought. That was the one they mentioned. I guess I need to see, I have one Monday morning at nine o'clock. The one we're gonna have to lunch with. Yeah, yeah, I haven't seen anything on that. I guess I can go check on it. I would have thought I got something by now.
And we adjourn at eight fifty-seven?